Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We call the meeting of the Liberty County Board of Commissioners to an end.
Mr. Brown, has the meeting been properly advertised?
Yes, sir, it is.
Thank you, sir. It's good to see everyone today. Thank you for coming to our first meeting of the month. We do have two. One tonight, it's the first Tuesday, and another meeting is the third Thursday at 5:00. So, first meeting is at 6:00. The mid-month meeting is at 5:00. And of course, all the meetings are live-stream. You can watch them from the confines of your home if you would like to. But we thank you for being here today. There's a lot of special interests here, and we appreciate that. We're gonna make our way through this. We've been, I can't say, we had similar situations before, so this is not totally new to us. As Commissioner Walden will say, this is not our first rodeo. So we're here tonight to work our way through the business of the county, and we do our best to do that. I don't see anyone from the Ministry of Alliance normally that would come and lead us in our prayer. That being said, I'm gonna ask Assistant County Administrator, Mr. Joe Moses, to come lead us in our prayer. Please stand now for the prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Gracious and most kind Father, we thank you for your boundless blessings and everything that you do for us on a daily basis. We come now, Father, beseeching you, asking you for divine wisdom and insight tonight. We pray for peace and grace and mercy tonight, Father God. And Father God, we pray for those who are going through and struggling tonight, those who, Father God, may be grieving the loss of a loved one. We pray that you would endow them with a supernatural abundance of grace and undergird them. These and all the blessings, we thank you in the powerful and penetrating name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Those, let me go and do this now, but those of you who are preparing to speak, there's a signing sheet. You may have seen Maria already at the back. You have to sign in. You're allowed three minutes to speak, and there'll be no rebuttals, speaking. If there are questions, Jeff will address those questions. We'll do our best to do that. So, if you hadn't signed in to speak to the rezoning, Maria sits back there with her signing sheet. You can sign in, and then she'll pass that sheet to Mr. Brown when we get to that part on the agenda, and we'll move in that fashion, please. So please, ma'am, please, sir, help us out with that. All right. Commissioners, the minutes from the month of November will require our approval November 1st and November 17th. Chair and Chair motion to have those minutes approved.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion in the second. We approve the minutes from November 1st and 17th. Is there any discussion on those? All in favor, show your hands, please. Minutes for November are approved. Thank you. All right. Department reports, there's none today. Do business, property purpose, property purchase, excuse me, LCHD.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The purpose of that agenda item is to ratify board action concerning the purchase of land for the new Liberty County Health Department. On the screen, you'll see actually the parcels that are being acquired by the county in proximity to the National Guard Armory. It'll be all these tracks to the left that border on Highway 84, very close proximity to the Veterans Clinic. But it'll be these tracks along this side, this large track, and then one out parcel track over here. They all total about 6.12 acres. And what we need tonight is just a motion to ratify action to acquire that property for SAP from SAP Investors.
Mr. Chairman, I would offer the motion to purchase that property from SAP Development.
SAP Investors.
SAP Investors, yes, sir.
Motion in second, and we ratify the motion to purchase property from SAP Investors to build the new Liberty County Health Department.
And just as, just as a quick update, as you know, the space planning's already been done for that building with the Health Department staff. And so now that we've acquired the land, we'll be going in there to do some initial brushing, to be able to do a site plan development to bring back to the board as the plans move forward for construction.
Mr. Brown, especially having the podium give the order, just a little bit of how we got there, and you know, the age of the Health Department, those kind of things.
The current Health Department was built in the early 60s, and of course, with the change in the healthcare environment, delivery of services, not to mention what the public has just gone through with COVID and vaccine deliveries is very inefficient, very non-sufficient for what's needed. The new Health Department has been in the works now for, you know, I think probably over 10 years. There's been money that the Health Department Coastal Health District has accumulated to help out with some of the design planning standards, and some of your ARPA money will actually be used to do this land purchase. Once that space, once the architectural drawings are complete, which we anticipate the first quarter of '23, then we would think that probably by spring, early summer, it would go out for a construction bid.
Okay, thank you, sir. Just wanted to ask you to know how we are at that point. Before we vote, anything you wanted to say, Commissioner, you've been so much involved in that.
Well, that was really a surprise for me, that we brought that before the board tonight, but I am very applaud. And with me saying that, we do have a new director coming on board for the Coastal Health District. Dr. Lawton Davis is retiring.
Is he?
Yes, and Dr. Bronzo Redrick will be coming. He lives in Poole, and he'll be over the nine counties in the Health District. So I am just floored that we got this. I'm so happy.
We're happy to hear it.
And I know the citizens of Liberty County are happy to be able to go into that, a new place, and so will our employees. Thank you so much. I appreciate the board's support.
Commissioner, three, Mr. Brown. If we start today, what's the finish date look like?
It's, it'd probably be a year of construction, so if you bid it out and get a successful bid that you award sometime in July, we think it'd probably be July of '24.
Okay. And do we have any plans of the?
No, sir, not yet, because we're waiting to acquire the site.
Okay.
So those plans can start it to be developed now.
No, I'm talking about for the old.
Oh, not for the old building. That's, that would be up to the board to decide, right? Of course, there's another tenant in that building, as you know, but yes, that'd be up for the board.
Okay.
Ms. Chairman, I have one more thing while we're on that subject is thankful to the citizens of Liberty County for passing the referendum, the new SPOST, because that was on the SPOST referendum, to help fund the new Liberty County Health Department.
Yes, ma'am.
Sure was. SPOST strikes again. All in favor of the motion, let it know my show of hands, please. Motion passed. We'll accept that deal, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Res zoning petition, 22071LC. Chair and Chair motion to go into public?
So moved.
So moved. All in favor, show your hands, please. All right, public hearing, sir.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Commission. Our first zoning request tonight is rezoning petition 202271LC. This is a petition submitted by Newbridge Residential Parks LLC to rezone 139.6 acres of land from A1 agricultural to, and AR1 agriculture to I1 industrial district for a warehouse and distribution and logistics facility located at 2624, 2426 Islands Highway. This is the sign that's located on Islands Highway in front of the driveway to the property, and this is the ad in the Coastal Courier. This is a picture, just a survey picture of the, of the property. This is the part that goes down to Islands Highway. The property that's being requested to be rezoning is removed from Islands Highway by several hundred feet back in this direction. And this is part of a larger 308-acre tract of land. This is just 139 acres of land on the upper part. This is already cleared. Most of the property down in the lower area, at least in the lower middle part of the area, is wetland, so that will be a buffer between the proposed facility and the area to the south of it. And this is the vicinity map, just showing what's in the vicinity. Just for reference, that's Islands Highway. This is the existing driveway that goes back to the property. And this is the, the red is the outline of the area that's being requested to be rezoned, and the blue is the rest of the property that is gonna, is being proposed to remain in ag. And this is the zoning map, just showing that, you can see here, this is the Tradeport East Industrial Park. It sort of wraps around the northern portion of the property. You can see the portion that they're asking to rezon is bordering the industrial park on two sides there, and then you can see the rest of the property is being proposed to remain in ag zoning. And this flood map, as you can see, there's some flooding across Islands Highway, some floodplains across Islands Highway, but there aren't any floodplains on the immediate site. And this is a narrative from the applicant. The applicant says that they would like to rezon the property for the purpose of a industrial warehousing center and calling it Liberty Logistics Center. And this is the site, proposed site layout. You can see that this is the outlined area that they're requesting to rezon. They're proposing to put a million-square-foot building up in the upper edge, up against the Tradeport East Industrial Park. As you can see, this road here, they're proposing to access the internal roads. I think it would actually go up to ML Kofor Court, which the County and Development Authority recently built, so that would, the access would be on the internal part of Tradeport East, and there would be no access over here on Islands Highway. And you can see there's a large detention pond on the lower part of what they're rezoning, and that would, that would serve the detention, water detention purposes for the whole site. And this is just a conceptual layout exhibit as well, just showing, as I just described to you, how the property is proposed to go in and connect with the existing internal roads in, in Tradeport East. And you can see there's no connection, no proposed connection there to Islands Highway. Our zoning analysis, does a property have reasonable economic value as currently zoned? Our answer is yes. Does the property, does proposed use conform to the Fort Stewart J-LUS study, the Joint Land Use Study that Fort Stewart did? Yes. Number three, does a proposed use conform to the Liberty County Comprehensive Plan? The answer there is no. The Comprehensive Plan reflected the existing A1 zoning, which was, which is agricultural forestry. Number four, will there be adverse effect on the value and usability of nearby properties? Our answer there is yes. While part of the property abuts Tradeport East Industrial Park, as I showed you on the previous map, it also abuts some, several residential properties, the impact of which could be mitigated by buffers, and you'll see a little bit more of that when we get to the conditions. Number five, is the proposed use suitable in view of nearby uses? Answer is yes. Number six, will the zoning proposal create an undue burden on transportation, streets, transit, public safety, schools, and utilities? Our answer there is no. The proposed access to this project will be routed through the industrial, through the existing industrial park. Number seven, will this create a short-term gain at the expense of our long-term goals? No. Number eight, will this change cause a domino effect and encourage sprawl? Answer is yes, because it possibly could. Number nine, are there unique historical sites which may be adversely impacted? And we've noted there that there are several historic sites in the area, but this would not adversely impact them. Number 10, is this parcel in a flood hazard area? You saw on the map that I showed you earlier that it is not. Number 11, is it spot zoning and unrelated to the existing pattern of development? Answer is no. Number 12, are there unique conditions that support approval or denial? And our answer there is the proposed project abuts the industrial, the existing industrial park at Tradeport East. Planning Commission heard this at their November meeting, their regular November meeting in this room, and they recommend approval with standard and special conditions. And there are standard conditions. The special conditions are three of them. Number one, the proposed development shall not have direct access to Islands Highway. Number two, there should be a 100-foot vegetative buffer placed along all non-industrial or budding properties. And number three, light industry and distribution only with no heavy manufacturing. And those are the special conditions. Again, Planning Commission recommends approval with standard and those special conditions. If you'd like to answer any questions that you have.
Sure. Jill, go back to the wetlands. Like, it should be about the third slide. Passed it.
The wetlands map?
Yeah. I think we can work with that one.
Yeah, the, I think this is the best one that shows the wetlands down to the, in the area, and the portion of the property that's not being requested for rezoning.
How much wetland is down that?
The engineers here, can you tell me approximately how many wetlands are in the middle part of that property? I think it was about 100 acres or so?
120.
120 acres of the, of the 300 acres is wetlands. And the wetlands are pretty much in the middle of the property in this area. So there are some usable properties down here in this ag land that would be left.
Okay. What I'm, what I'm trying to do is, if this is rezoned, and then it's sold later to possibly the industrial authority, couldn't they jump through the hoops and do some wetlands delineation and pick up more property?
Well, these, these wetlands have actually been delineated, so they're, I mean, there's been, there's a study behind this, so I don't think they could pick up any more property in the middle of the, of the site. And the area down here, there are some usable properties down in the lower part of the site.
Okay. Now, the one you said about impacting Islands Highway? How are trucks gonna get back to 95?
They, they would go through the internal roads. This, this road here would go up and connect to ML Kofor Court, and then that would go out to the Sunbury Road, which is the main entrance that goes through Tradeport East.
Then it still comes back up to Islands Highway?
It will come back up to the, the intersection that the county is planning to improve at Islands Highway.
Okay. So, that would be putting a burden in the future, or now, on the taxpayers of Liberty County.
There, the county is also working on a development agreement program with all these new developers that will, that will pay their proportionate share of, of the cost of the road improvements.
I hear what you're saying, but right now, so are they going to hole up, pay, we do the infrastructure, then they come in and do the building?
I believe, it was my understanding that the county was going to front the money for the infrastructure, and it would be paid back as development permits were, were granted to these, these industries that were moving in.
Mr. Chair, I'm just, I wanna make sure I didn't miss anything. What Mr. Rickerson just said, that county is going to put up the money, where's that money coming from? Is it gonna come from the industrial authority?
You just exceeded my knowledge base here, so I'm gonna have to defer to either.
I know, and I wanna make sure I didn't miss anything.
Yes, Commissioner Stevens, as you're aware, the board's been discussing development agreements, establishment of encroachment and development agreements with developers in this area so that they can pay fees associated with the infrastructure that's gotta be built. While the board's made no decision in this room to borrow money to do those improvements, that is a method that's available to you to go ahead and facilitate those improvements. The other option for the board would be to delay those improvements until such time as quantities exist in the fund paid by the developers to start that. So that would be up to the board to how they want to do that. The board, though, would have a proportionate share of those improvements due to the fact of increased population growth on the east end of county, not related to any development growth. So that chart's coming to you. You'll see the county's share of that road improvement, and again, it'd be up to the Commission to decide whether it wanted to facilitate the improvements and make them ahead of time, or whether it wanted to wait on the fund to accumulate money.
Okay.
I have a question, Chairman. Jeff, on one of the slides, you said that what a developer was gonna be for the, where this, the rezoning is, and then you said that beyond there, I guess, it'd be south of that, that, that that will remain agricultural. Could you go to that slide here?
Yeah, this is the zoning map. So this is what they're requesting to rezon to industrial, which is what Tradeport is here. So everything down below this line would remain green, which is agricultural zoning.
Okay, so just, just the red is being?
Just the red is being requested for industrial.
And when you say remain agricultural, that's just for the, for, do you have any, forever, or just?
Well, I mean, this.
That's the wetlands down there?
Yeah, the, the wetlands is sort of in the middle band of the property, and then below here, there are some uplands that could be developed, but they would be, they would be only developed as, and what's allowed in the A1 zone, which is ag, which is low density.
Okay. So the, below that red line, it could be developed at a later date?
Below, below the red line and below the wetlands, which are about right here, it could be developed at a later date, under the current zoning for low-density ag or that type of use.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Mr. Brown, you have the list?
I do, sir. First, the rules call for the proponent to be heard first, if the proponent wishes to speak.
Who's speaking for, okay.
Ms. Chairman, just as a reminder, they, the proponent and others will have three minutes to do their presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. My name is David Liu, and this is my partner, Richard Ortiz, and we're here with Mary Ann Rosignol, and we are Newbridge Residential Parks, and we just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to speak here this evening. We thought, with us tonight is also Jim Collins, who's our engineer from Thomas &amp; Hutton, and we thought we'd introduce ourselves for a few seconds, and then we'd ask Jim to come up and talk about the merits of the project. As you might have heard, we're from New York City, but we're not new to Liberty County. We've been here since 2018. We own three separate manufactured housing communities, a 14-unit multifamily project, and several parcels of land in Liberty County, one of which is this 307-acre parcel. Since 2018, in addition to our purchase price, we've spent over a million dollars of our own money, not investors' money, but our personal money, fixing up the assets, including we've renovated over 150 homes, we've repaired, you know, roads, fences, landscaping, lighting, and we've worked very closely with local officials and law enforcement, all with the goal of improving the communities here in Liberty County. Additionally, we donated a seven-acre site to the Liberty County Boys and Girls Club to help facilitate a new 20,000-square-foot facility in Waltersville along West Olguthorpe Highway. Our hope is that these actions are symbolic of our long-term interest in remaining in Liberty County and sort of indicative of our desire to be productive members of the business community here in Liberty County. And with that, what I'd like to do is introduce Jim Collins to come up and speak on behalf of the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, I'm Jim Collins with Thomas &amp; Hutton. We're the planners and civil engineers on the project. I just wanted to add a couple of things to Jeff's presentation. We will, the retention pond will meet Liberty County standards, which is eight inches of rainfall over 24 hours. One other thing I wanted to point out is that the, the building that we have shown on the sketch plan, which was part of our submittal, is set back roughly 1,700 to 1,800 feet from Islands Highway. Stormwater coming out of that pond will be filtered through the wetlands into a culvert underneath Islands Highway and making its way to the Newport River. And that, those were the only points that I wanted to add, Mr. Chairman. Happy to answer any questions Commissioners may have.
Any questions for this gentleman? Is there the right to bring you back?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right.
Ms. Chairman, first person wishing to speak is Ms. Nancy Meyer.
Nancy Meyer. Please say your name. Probably, are you comfortable speaking without your mask? We'll hear you clearly if you're comfortable. If you're not, keep it on.
Does anybody have COVID? Okay. Okay, good evening. My name is Nancy Meyer, Nancy Holman Meyer, formerly from Deloatch Yeomans, Hymian. He represents our end of the county, and we appreciate what he does, and we appreciate what you do. he does, and we appreciate what you do, too. I would like to start my little plea to you this evening with the words pave paradise and put up a parking lot. Not just because it's on the east end of Liberty County. Everybody has their own impression and their own feeling about what their paradise is. I don't live in this section, but I am pleading for the people who live there, whose paradise it is, to not continue paving our paradise. If you look at this map, well, if you look where the red is, one part, one more step, which encroaches on residential agricultural area. Mr. Riggers, I believe, said, oh, the blue is wetlands. Not gonna touch that. Oh, but underneath, on the other side of the wetlands, is an area of land which can be developed, but not really, because it's A1. This is also A1. And you're taking the last step to take an A1, a wetland, and then comes the next A1, which I assume will be the other part of people's paradise which you will pave over. That is not acceptable, lady and gentleman. There are thousands of other acres of I-16, thousands of other places. We do not need a warehouse, warehouses, millions of square feet. The next thing, excuse me, sir, Mr. Collins, oh yes, we're gonna have a retention pond. We're gonna funnel that water, we're gonna clean that water, and we're gonna put it into the Newport River. The Newport River is not fresh water. As all of you should know, the water in our area is brackish. What are you gonna do to the wildlife in the water? All the fish, all the shrimp, which is a big industry for our county, all the crabbing, all the freshwater fishers go to Sunbury, fish off the dock, that water goes right into it. Why are you doing this? Why are you even, even considering this drastic step for our county? Why? I cannot simply understand it.
It's time, it's time, Mrs. Meyer.
I cannot understand it.
Next.
Next person on the list is Ms. Martha Dykes.
You said really pretty words. I'm from the south, I can't talk fast, but I will try. The first, my name is Martha Dykes. The first petition I received was this outrageous petition to rezone this right straight across the road from where I live, and across the road from my property. The same day I received that petition, I received yet another petition for the other that is on your agenda tonight, to rezone it agricultural. So I have this in front of me with the prospect of something behind me. I'm beyond mad, I'm nauseated, I'm emotionally and physically and mentally drained at the thought of these warehouses in our neighborhood. Warehouses should be confined in an industrial setting, not in our front and backyards, not where our children and grandchildren play, and not where natural habitat live. You've already decimated a large percentage of woodland in our area to house these buildings. What's left of the natural, is your plan to continue on destroying what's left before a, before all the beauty of the coastal area is destroyed? As a Liberty County taxpayer for over 50 years, and now a resident and property owner east of Liberty County, I'm here once again fighting for what is attempting to be stolen from me and from all Liberty County who enjoy the coastal region. I'm 74 years old. He's gonna plant a buffer. Is it gonna be jack-in-bean stalk, kind of a stuff, of thing that's gonna grow up overnight? I'll be dead before I see that 50-foot building head, and million-square building head. Every person deserves an environment that supports them, not an environment that holds a potential for health hazards, as would be with the building of these mega warehouses. You don't even know what's gonna be in some of these. Have you ever entertained the thought of these warehouses catching on fire? Right next door to where we, the residents, live, the fire department couldn't even put out a fire down the road from me, and the house burned down. What chance would we residents have in the event of a warehouse fire? Or like what happened in Brunswick, where subdivision had to be evacuated? What if, what if we had to evacuate? That's a one-way road. We would be trapped, some would be harmed. Think about that. Think about the constant 24/7 sound of beeping trucks, the constant sound of these trucks entering and leaving, day and night, 24/7. The constant smell and inhalation of the diesel fumes that are filling our area. According to the Cancer Society and the EPA, these high pollutants lead to heart risk, lung irritation, asthma, and worse. I read an article stating that the exposures are highest where diesel traffic is the heaviest. Due to the rapid growth of proposed industrialization, environmental pollution will be increasing, endangering our lives. You can tell I'm mad. These, there are small children, elderly people-
Ms. Dykes, you need to-
-that live in this area.
You need to come to conclusion.
I'm not a rocket scientist, but I have common sense. A community planning meeting to receive comments on amended future land use is scheduled for December 8th. Today is the 6th. Do you see a problem, or do just we residents see a problem in that? These rezoning petitions, in all moral integrity, should be tabled until after the December 8th meeting. If these rezonings are approved before the December 8th meetings, it will prove you aren't listening to lifelong tax-paying residents of this area that are being affected, that have standing, and you're disregarding the future land map of the county.
Thank you, Ms. Dykes.
Say no to this madness. Say no to this encroachment. Say no to destroying the natural habitat of the wildlife. Say no to the continuation of the decimation of eastern Liberty County.
Ms. Dykes?
Say no to the rezoning of these two petitions. A yes vote would be a slap in the face of the citizens of Liberty County.
Thank you, Ms. Dykes. The next three-minute presenter, who's?
Ms. Rhonda Durney.
Please are here to the time, y'all, so we can keep everything orderly.
As long as we let Ms. Dykes go through, we're okay.
Okay, well, I did.
Hi, Rhonda Durney. I'm not gonna say much today, because, you know, I keep contacting all of you and keep speaking, and I honestly don't feel that any of you are hearing, you might be hearing what we're saying, but I'm not so sure you're listening, because I agree with Mrs. Dykes and everyone else, and I just heard them say they're gonna send water from this property that you might rezone, you know, down toward my house. Well, I'm already getting flooded out from what's been going on already. I can't imagine more of that. I mean, my, my property, a butt's where those pipes go under the road. So, no, we can't send water that way. I'm just no what. But I'm gonna say, tonight, the Declaration of Independence begins, "We hold these truths to be self-evident," and it goes on to include "life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, being our unalienable rights. And our unalienable rights cannot be superseded by government laws or cultural norms." I want you to think about that. Life, what does this mean? Ownership of our life? It means our quality of life, which is absolutely, positively being destroyed by this constant rezoning and these buildings, these horrid buildings. Liberty, freedom to live without oppression, restrictions imposed by the authority on one's way of life. We certainly are being restricted. I don't care where those trucks come out. The carcinogens and the stench are going to affect all of us, the noise is gonna affect all of us, and it's gonna take a half hour, 45 minutes for those of us that only live a mile and a half away to get out of there. It's horrid. I can't believe you're doing this. Pursuit of happiness, that means to have a good and flourishing life, to be able to have joy and have gratitude where you live. While we certainly can't do that with what's going on. Our lives are being overrun by rezoning and resultant warehouses. They're causing traffic issues, noise, flooding, degradation of our environment, the list goes on. You know, every time I've told you about all the carcinogens, nobody's ever made a comment about that. People are gonna die, traffic accidents, and because of the resulting carcinogens from all those trucks. You could smirk all you want, it's the truth. Our liberty is impinged by authorities forcing us to live near warehouses we do not want, and have consistently told you we do not want, destroying our way of life. Our pursuit of happiness is now impossible already, with our homes being diminished and our lives constantly being in danger. And I just implore you, please vote no. This has not stopped. Every time somebody comes up here and wants a rezoning, all we hear is, oh, well, you know, they've got this other property there, or this one only wants, you know, 100 and so acres, but they've got 5, 5,000 more or 500 more to rezone. It's got to stop. I mean, it really has. You need to vote no.
Thank you.
Mr. Rich Ortiz?
I already thought.
Okay, thank you. Mr. David Lu, you've already spoken to, sir. Ms. Edna Walthier?
Good evening. I'm Edna Walthier, lifelong citizens of Liberty County, and I was raised on the east end of the county, and I treasure, I really value, everything down there, but I dare not get in the way of progress. I believe the county is doing a good job at working on a comprehensive plan for the entire county, including the east end, but I know that things change, and when I get to fussing, it's because it doesn't look like it's improving in a quality manner. No matter where you are, things gonna happen, that's gonna affect your health one way or another, your health, safety, or welfare. Things change. But I would like to say that I've seen the quality of the works, the possessions, the real estate, et cetera, of this group. I'm very impressed with it. Number one, if we're talking about this county, we're talking about our future. This is one group that has come here and put like a million dollar already in favor of growing the ones who are gonna take care of us when we cannot tie our shoes. That is in the interest of the county, where we live, who's gonna take care of us. We, I know we have Board of Education, but the Board of Education can only do so much. We need to do more, we need others to do it. We thank God for them who have come to this area in such an awesome manner, like they're doing in other places, but we're just grateful that they've done this for Liberty County. We were struggling trying to do it. We had the highest teenage pregnancy rate, with our juvenile delinquency rate is not pretty at all. But when we get a company that wants to come and give back, not just come and ask for a tax break, but a company that wants to come and give back to our most important resource, I really hope you all can support the work for this county. Thank you, for this company. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Bianca Croft. I'm a 36-year resident of Liberty County. I grew up on Port Stewart. My father retired and purchased a house in Heinzville. I grew up dead smack in the middle of the city. So I now live on the east end of Liberty County, which I have always wanted to live on that side, namely because it's coastal property. I am here tonight in opposition. Although I can respect progress and change in our county, growing up here, I knew what it was like not to have restaurants, or shopping, or things to do. But this is a little dear, near and dear to my heart. My property, our property, is off of Hannah Dune Lane. It is a dirt road. It bumps up right next to your property, and I'm told that you're only interested in the red area and rezoning that from agricultural to industrial. This is how I feel. Unless that wetlands and all of that area delineated in the A1 is put in a conservation easement, never to be developed, I, I cannot stand, I cannot stand for the approval process. One, I have a hobby, a hobby farm. I don't wanna look at warehouses. I'm already looking at Trayport East, and now another set of warehouses on the other side. We purchased on Allen's Highway to get away from the city, to get away from the noise, the light pollution, the traffic issues. Newbridge Residential Park LLC is very misleading. Literally, when you guys bought, I thought you were gonna put in a subdivision, or a nice park, or something, not another warehouse. And it's troublesome to me to know that the property just north of that, that the county owns, is not even developed yet. So I would like to see what, I would like to see a stop to any industrial rezoning unless all of our industrial areas in Liberty County are full. Now, I don't wanna tell you guys what to do with your property, but I would love to see a subdivision. I would, I would like to know if you're a resident of Liberty County. I mean, I put my blood, sweat, and tears into this place. I have no children, we pay taxes. I could've lived anywhere and chose to stay here and, and, and give back to the community. And, not that I care where you're from, I would like to know if you're a resident of the county. If, if you really are gonna be building something that, that will help our children, the Boys and Club, or Boys and Girls, what you gave that, that's, that's very nice. But, as I was talking to Mr. Walden, I felt like there were some underlying issues.
Ms. Croft, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Croft.
The next is Ms. Susan Inman.
Ms. Inman?
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity tonight to speak. My name is Susan Inman. I am the coastal advocate for a nonprofit called 100 Miles. We work to protect the coast through education, advocacy, and civic engagement. We're all here tonight because we consider these rezoning issues paramount, so land use regulation continues in the most orderly and predictable fashion, with the least amount of disturbance to landowners and to the citizens of the county. The residents in East Liberty feel like they're in quicksand with this fast-paced industrial rezoning. They have sent letters, as you know, they call you, and some are here tonight. Along with you, they have a strong interest in growth management to promote traditional goals of health, safety, aesthetics, the general welfare of the community, and in particular, lessening the future proposed congestion on the county roads. The current comprehensive plan and future land use maps are guidelines for decision makings on all levels. It is a guide for residents when they choose where to live, it's a guide for county budgets, roadways, improvement, fire support, water sewage, we can go on and on. This is why you, as the county commissioners, need to abide by these maps and guidelines when you make your decisions. These current maps do have room for community growth and multi-use properties, but we need to stand firm when it comes to transformational developments proposed every few months through rezoning. Liberty County is not missing out if you don't approve warehouses to be built in this area. You're actually ahead of the game, because you can see Bloomingdale, Effingham, Bullock County, Port Wentworth, Garden City are all in a moratorium, or at, or near the end of their moratoriums, for rezoning for development due to too many fast and transformational developments outside of their future land use maps. They can't keep up either. View these counties and cities as examples of what not to do. We should not view these as our competitors. They've made mistakes, let's not repeat them. I know you've heard the residents' concerns- I know you've heard the residents' concerns tonight and through the emails and calls, so I ask you to stick with the guidelines set before you in the comprehensive plan. Let the already defined industrial zone area be completely built out before rezoning any new industrial area. If you have any doubts about these warehouses being built, please table this request for thirty days. This will allow residents to meet with the developers, or even to meet with the county, to possibly come up with solutions to the concerns. But really, tonight, I'm asking you to vote no to the rezoning of this parcel. Thank you all for your time and your service.
Mr. Ralph Gaskin?
Mr. Gaskin?
I'm Ralph Gaskin. I live down in Sunbury on twenty-six ninety-four Allen Highway. We all know I'm got it, have eighteen wood in the yard. I received this letter.
Ms. Gaskin, thank you, sir, very much.
I received this letter saying that two hundred feet of my property is within what y'all got going on down there. And before I even got this letter, and I just moved down there, and I would be outside in the backyard, I would hear the excavators and bulldozers and stuff behind where I live at. Now, I'm asking myself, have they already started development and doing everything they got to do before we even had this meeting or anything? Has my property already been taken and everything? Because like I said, it's, well, we own seven acres right there. And if I hear the excavators and the bulldozers seven acres away, then had they already took the property? Had they already done what they wanted to do? Or what's going on? I mean, even with the water and everything. Some people in Sunbury, right after that, of the store that got down there, they're getting flooded in their backyard because of what's going on. So I mean, what's really going on? Or are we just here to come to the meeting and say something? And then no matter what we say, it's void, it's void, it's void? Or do we really have a voice about what's going on?
Mr. Ron Tully?
Can I say, Mr. Gaskin? Jeff, raise your hand, please. See that gentleman before you leave. He can ask some little questions for you.
All right. Good evening. Just a few quick pieces of information. I was asked about the number of manufacturing and transportation and warehousing jobs in the community. There are currently four thousand one hundred and seventy jobs in manufacturing, transportation, and warehousing in Liberty County with a total wage each year of over a quarter of a billion dollars, two hundred and fifty-four million plus. In the past ten years with the development of Tradeport East Business Center, the employment has increased roughly one hundred and fifty new jobs per year. The authority wants to continue this momentum. It's creating jobs for people that need them to help support their families. We hope that the commission wants to do the same. Due to this success, however, the acreage available to the authority for new projects in Tradeport East has decreased over this period of time from an initial one thousand four hundred and twenty-four developable acres to only two hundred and thirty-two acres today. And verbal agreements on new projects have already been reached on another eighty-five of these remaining two hundred and thirty-two acres. This leaves the authority with developable acreage moving forward of only one hundred and forty-seven acres in the prime area for new job creation in Liberty County. These acreage limitations have now deleted us from consideration for larger-scale projects that we could have handled in the past but can no longer support. An example being the one and a half million square foot Target Distribution Center, which employs a lot of people. The rezoning of new properties for industrial use is therefore crucial if the commission wants to have continued growth and development in Liberty County. The authority obviously fully supports the proposal in front of you and the one that will follow later this evening for the proposed rezonings to industrial, and hope that you will do the same if you want the county to move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, last speaker is Mr. Don Hartley.
Mr. Hartley. Hello, sir.
Is that y'all up there instead of me? Come on, Don. I have not anticipated in this, as this thing was underway. I've only talked to one person. It appears to me that we're all on the same page, but the problem is we're trying to get there with error. We got here because of the COVID virus, believe it or not. We haven't done our homework. Why? People have been sick. They didn't go to work. The people we deal with were sick. They couldn't help us do our job. And now this has created a mess. We're about to mess in our nest, and that's not what we want to do here. We're not in that business, are we? We have two groups of people here, and we're all fighting over a barbed fence. You got two losers when you fight over a barbed fence. Let's get on the same side, and let's work this thing out. These people had really, really good objections to this thing. What I'm going to say is for everything you have on the list tonight and what you're going to be facing in the next several months. We have about thirty-two hundred households that use that intersection every day. The people down on Colonel's Island in the eastern part of the county have one road in and one road out. They've got to go through whatever garbage winds up at the front on the seventy-six exit. Question is, is do we want to do the same thing with our prized exit, interstate exits, as Bryan County did? Let's put a motorhome sales organization there, put big cranes on both sides, rusted cranes, things that are very lovely to look at. We're not in that business. This is our pride. This is our, this is where we spent our money. This is where we put, the public put money into that industrial park to build it like it should be. And Ron's done a good job. He sold it. It's true. The growth that you base, I wrote part of that.
Three minutes?
Development Authority. Three minutes? I'm there already.
You're there already. I was kind of worried about you.
I'm going to just go right on to the meter. We have, we have a way to do this. Put good recommendations on the table. Let me throw out a couple for you. We need to revisit roundabouts. Trent Long George is drawing them up for us. Let's look at them. Will it help us? Let's do a large, comprehensive traffic study for that interchange with road networks to make it happen. Comprehensive, I don't mean count study. I'm trying to, I'm trying to dog to count. Do the deep work, the deep dig, just like we did on the comprehensive plan for a fifty-year, a fifty-year life of that plan for that interchange. We're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty-four hundred to three thousand six hundred trucks per day. That comes out to about three hundred and five to four hundred and fifty trucks per hour on an eight-hour day using that interchange on a two-way highway, on a bridge, two lanes. It's not going to work, folks. We have somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty-four million dollars, a million square foot of space that's on the table now for us. We got to be careful here, or we're going to poison ourselves. No new curb cuts off of Island Highway. Setbacks. You heard a hundred-foot setback from Jeff. I recommend a hundred and twenty-five-foot setback, green berm, five feet tall, with a five-year guarantee it stays berm green. That will hide noise and vision from the people coming down the Island Highway. Consider impact fees. Install a waste station. Why don't we put a waste station in the industrial park? And when a trucker comes out of that industrial park, and if he's overweight, he will pay the price.
Are you finishing that, Mr. Hartley?
I am finishing here, sir. I was up there. Thank you so much for that.
We'd like to have copies of that.
Thank you.
You can just give it to Mr. Brown right there if you want.
Thank you, sir.
He was the last speaker, Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I got one. I got a plan. I just got a statement I want.
Let's hold your statement, listen. Do the questions first.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Rick Assan. It's me again. I just have a few questions and I guess a few statements. And actually, I have one for Mr. Tully as well. Okay. Going back to the zoning analysis, if we can, please, sir. If we go back to number four, where it asks, will there be an adverse effect on the value and usability of the nearby properties? And the answer was yes. Can you, I guess, elaborate a little bit more on that?
Well, we pointed out that the northern part of the property, two sides of, northern two sides of the property are abutting Tradeport East. There won't be any negative impacts at all on the Tradeport East side, but there are some properties in between this, between this property and Island Highway that are being residentially used and with proper buffers. We've said they could be mitigated by buffers. If you didn't have any buffers, then yeah, they'd be looking at their back door at a warehouse, but if there's buffers there, they won't be able to see that. So that's, that's the, that's the long answer there.
Okay. I, I just had, had a few concerns with that because, you know, the definition of adverse effect is preventing success or development or harmful or unfavorable. So that is a real concern for me. And it's not the first time I spoke up about this, especially about warehouses over there in that area. I know I've, more importantly, last time this came across our desk, I wasn't able to be here, I phoned in, and I asked the question, is that the highest and best use of that property? Do you feel that with this particular location, you think this is the highest and best use of the property? In your opinion?
I'm not an appraiser, but I do believe that this is a high use. I can't say it's the best use, but it's bordered on two sides by the county's industrial park. It's got access to utilities and the internal road system, so it is a high use. I won't say it's the highest.
Okay. All right. And then we could go to number eight, please, sir. And it talks about the, will this cause a domino effect and encourage sprawl? I mean, we already know it's going to cause domino effect. I mean, the reason why they're here is because, the reason why they're here is because we passed the first one. And my fellow commissioners, I told y'all this was about to come down. I said it. And here we are now. And again, you all know I'm a huge supporter of economic development, especially in Liberty County, but I just want to make sure that we do it right. And do it right the first time so we don't have to go back generations behind us, because none of us are going to be up here forever. So I just want to make sure that, that we just do the things right. And I'm concerned about the sprawling part. Domino is coming, but, you know, we're looking at sprawl. You and I both know that's, you know, here, there, popping up a little bit everywhere. So I'm also concerned about that. And then also, Mr. Tully as well, I heard your numbers about the one hundred and forty-seven acres that are available. Is that just in Tradeport East, or is that the combination of all the Development Authority locations that we currently have?
That is Tradeport East.
Okay. So what's the total on all of the development that we have? Do you have that number?
Probably under a thousand, maybe around seven or eight hundred acres that are located five miles off the interchange and not nearly as marketable.
Okay. All right. And I guess I have another question for you as well. I know we've asked for this information from you and the Development Authority for numerous years now. You gave the number out saying that we have four thousand one hundred and seventy-one jobs out there. Do we have the number of, how many of them live in Liberty County?
Yes. Yes. It typically runs around fifty percent.
I mean, I'm not here to question that, but if you can, can you get us a current number?
We just say empirically, will we let you go ahead and do that?
I appreciate that.
Google it right now.
And then also, I know we've, we've talked about it as well, about the agreement that we were going to have with developers. And again, I support development. I'm a small business owner. I get it. But I'm concerned about us not having that agreement in place before we continue to kick these, these projects down the road. Because I know personally, I bought a house before, and it was a HUD. And the developer told me, I didn't even have any kids at that time, he said, man, you buy this house, we're going to build this over here, build that over there. I guarantee you, if I go to my old neighborhood in Atlanta now, guarantee you it's not there. So I'm just worried about, about, from the business standpoint, you know, when are we going to make sure that we have that agreement in place before we keep approving, approving, and approving? And again, I'm not even saying that I'm against it. I'm just saying that I personally feel that we need to have our stuff in order prior to us continue to support or not support certain projects. That's where I'm at. Because at the end of the day, yes, I support progress, you know, the quality of life. I do have some concerns about infrastructure, but I know we're working on that, and I understand how government works. I understand we can't go build a five-lane highway with nothing there yet. You know, we have to be able to prove that development is coming and make sure. So we can go out and reach out to, you know, G Dot, and, you know, and we have been in talks with, you know, our senators and everyone else from the state level and also the federal level. So I appreciate what we've been doing to try to stay in front of it. And then also, I do commend New Bridge Residential Parks for what you all have done in Liberty County. I just want y'all to know, you know, as a commissioner, I do support that, and everyone knows I support the kids. So I'm always about that. So I'm always about that. So for everything you all have done in current and also future investments in our community, I do want to say thank you for that. Because there's a lot of companies that have been here for a long time that don't do nothing in our, in our county. And there's a, there's a huge list. I, I know Mr. Tully know which ones I'm talking about, but we don't see them, but I, I know they, they get their tax breaks. Never see them in the community. So with that being said, I, I, I just have some concerns. And, and one of the main concern is about the agreement that we've all discussed that we were gonna have in place before we continue to move forward with projects like this. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, fellow board members, everyone in the audience, I had to write this out because if I didn't, I'll probably leave half of it out. I says, to own your land, pay taxes on it is great, but to do what you want to do with it is not always in the best interest of the public, sometime due to its location. In this case, the location is next to the Industrial Authority with Wetlands, but it can be made good for right price and maybe sold to the Industrial Authority. And these are my thoughts. The entrance, the entry and exit way will be Island's Highway, which we talked about that earlier. And they will be, are these developers willing to install noise barrier, not just planting trees? And we need to have a control signal where it comes out at on Island's Highway. We've talked about that. We have not really talked about safety tonight. And that's, that's one of the safety issues that I have looked at. I've gone down there and sit and watched traffic in the afternoon, and it backs up when you come off of ninety-five trying to go down to Island's Highway. It backs up. It's dangerous already. Now we're getting ready to add more employees, perhaps some from Liberty, some from other counties, but they must have a way of coming out and going in. Part of the infrastructure, the road needs to be widening, made safe. We've talked about that a little bit, but we hadn't taken any action on it yet. The road needs repair, and it needs to be widening no further than probably up to where it's at now, due to the cemetery, houses on both sides past there, and the Dorchester School. So we don't wanna take away that historical piece there or destroy it. We don't wanna put the, since Island's Highway is a county highway, we don't wanna put all of this burden on the taxpayers of Liberty County. This burden needs to go elsewise, and not only just on one cent, or the T-Splash. Because y'all know how T-Splash is divided, equally among all commissioners. Another thing, Jeff, I ask you, do you have in the plans, do you have a written agreement with pub, public safety agencies on their tape and what their plans are for the future in that area? Do you have not talk, a written agreement?
I don't.
Okay. I think that's something that we need to look at. Also, keep in mind, this is connected right to the Industrial Authority. Some of the funds received from the Industrial Authority can help out on this because they, the Industrial Authority has a way of collecting money, which it only should be done by the tax collector of Liberty County and not the Industrial Authority. It's been going on for a while. If I'm around, prove me around.
You're not wrong.
The, the cost of police fire and medical service, schools, does not come cheap. And one more other, two more other things, we have not talked about coming over ninety-five. This is not even on the state radar yet. That's an issue. Another issue, Jeff, Ron, Chairman Levitt, you on the Industrial Authority, have we solved the water issue down there yet, dealing with other agencies, or is it still being bounced around? Thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I would like to get the county attorney to, to read something right here.
Yes, sir.
I've had calls, here you go, I've had calls, I've seen tweets, Facebook, letters, a lot about this particular thing. And I want you to read that, Kelly, if you would, to satisfy some folks that have, for some reason, think that this board would take money under the table for this project to go in. And read it, if you would.
Yes, sir. If you mind, I won't get into verbatim, but this is a financial disclosure statement that's required by state law in connection with rezoning actions, and it is your disclosure statement, which, which you have signed. And by way of the statement, you affirm that you have no interest, financial or otherwise, in the property that's subject to rezoning petition this evening. So you have no financial or other interest whatsoever, and neither does any member of your family have any interest, financial otherwise, in the property that's being proposed to be rezoned this evening. Yes, sir?
I just wanted to make sure that was a, everybody understood that, because that has been, that has been an issue that has been around, that I personally, I don't, I don't see any big problem with what's going on down there, personally. I've lived here in Liberty County for a very long time. I remember the Yeomanses. I remember a, a lot of the folks on the coast. And I, there's a few of them that I would've thought would've been here, or it's not. But it's not just our coast, it's anybody that wants to come and build down there, anybody. Because I can remember when there was nothing at Yellow Bluff, eight or ten houses at Colonel's Island, nothing at Plantin Hammock. There was nothing there. And individuals wanted to come, and I think they'll continue to come. But to, to insinuate in letters and on social media that this board, especially me, to take something, I, I think that's wrong. And I didn't really appreciate it, but it's over with. I get, I'll get through it. It's not a, but I wanted the county attorney to read that.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. Special conditions, if you'll just read that for us again, please, sir?
Yes, sir. The Planning Commission heard this request at their November meeting, the regular November meeting. They recommended approval of this with standard conditions in these three special conditions. Number one, the proposed development shall not have direct access to Island's Highway. Number two, there shall be a hundred-foot vegetative buffer along all non-industrial properties. And number three, light industry distribution only with no heavy manufacturing. Those are the three special conditions from the Planning Commission.
And how was that vote?
It was, it was split. It was maybe four to two.
No, two to one.
Was it? Okay. I, I don't have those minutes. I did read them last night, but I just don't recall.
You didn't have them as votes?
Yes.
All right. All right. All right, so it's all right. You've been doing a lot lately.
Yeah.
We appreciate you too. We, trust me, I understand, you know, your, your job is not easy, you know? You're, you're more of right, well, you and your team. You all are right in the middle, you know? And, and Liberty County is, is evolving, you know? And I, I just want everyone in the room to also know that, I mean, change is inevitable. It's coming, you know? And I understand that. I hope, I know all my fellow commissioners understand that as well. But again, you know, with me, I just want to make sure that it's strategic, you know? And I want to see more economics, not just from a warehouse standpoint, but more things for, for our children. And which I, I know it was said that they're doing it, but I'm talking about, I want to see people driving through Liberty County because we have some type of family entertainment and be able to, to have something here, you know, instead of our sales tax dollars leaving every day. Trust me, they are. But that's, that's, and another question, how, how far is this particular plot from the one that, that we approved, the first warehouse? Is it like all together?
The first warehouse you're talking about, back in April, back in March, the spring?
Right.
Those were immediately adjacent to Exit Seventy-Six. I mean, they were, they were fronting on I-95.
Right. Yeah.
So this is probably, if you measure it, is probably about two miles beyond that.
Two miles? Okay.
All right. Call the question, if everybody had opportunities to ask any question they wanted to ask, I'm making comments here. All right. At this time, then the chair will entertain a motion for this recommendation. It's on our monitor here, it's on the big screen, so we know what the recommendation is from LCPC.
Mr. Chair, before I make a motion, I just want to go back to number one. The purpose of it shall not directly access to Island's Highway, it may not directly, but it will affect Island's Highway.
Yes.
Okay? It will. Okay? So that needs to be looked at. But Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that, on this project, due to the infrastructure, none of it not being in place is almost like putting in a kitchen sink without having the kitchen countertop in the house. I make a motion that we disapprove it.
Second to the motion?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor of that motion, let me know by show of hands, please. Motion fails. Chair entertain a motion.
Mrs. Chair, I, I make a motion that, that we, that we tabled this, this particular project until we figure out where we are with, with our agreement with our developers and, and also try to come up with a, with a compromise between the developers and more education with the citizens that's out there.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. Further discussion? All in favor of that motion, let me know by show of hands. Motion dies. Motion fails. All right. Chair entertain another motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve it with the concept that Mr. Rickisane's come up with.
Second.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, could we, could we offer something in addition to that, if it's a motion recommended? It needs to also include language that would require execution of a development agreement prior to commencement of site development, other than clearing and grading regarding public roadway access and improvements in their funding, which is mutually acceptable to the under-end board commissioners. And in addition to the other approvals required by ordinance, whether or not located within a Liberty Gateway overlay district, approval by the board would be required for all site plans, and also include landscaping, lighting, and architectural plans, which should, among other additional objectives, be designed to minimize visual and noise impacts for proposed projects. Examples being sustainable and sustainable buffers, articulated architectural elements providing visual interest and character, loading dots located interior to the property, et cetera. Such approval could be withheld or conditioned further by the board commissioners at its sole absolute discretion. These conditions would be in addition to the requirements from the Planning and Zoning Commission, noting that exhibits and other materials, whether it be generated by or on behalf of the county, be provided by the applicant or others in connection with the rezoning application, and depict building layouts, design elements, and other development information, and that it not be solely binding on the board and does not guarantee favorable consideration on any future approval of any kind. If you would entertain a motion, sir, or a, an amendment to your motion.
I'll rescind my motion. And I will make a motion that we go forward with it and approve it with those, the verbiage you've got, Mr. Brown?
Second.
There was no discussion, that was not on the floor at any time.
Second.
I got a second.
Second, that's right. Okay. Further discussion, everybody clear? All in favor, let me know by show of hands, please. Motion passes.
What do you need from the board state? I might know.
She's just approved something.
There will be no outbursts in the room, there will be no outbursts in the room.
It was not on the floor.
There will be no outbursts in the room.
Hey, what, what four people voted? I didn't think you, I thought you were the tie-break vote.
Not a tie-break, I'm a voting chairman.
So there's four to three?
Yes, sir.
Could a four raise your hand again, please? So the people who vote and know who you are?
I guess, hopefully, cut it up for reelection. Guarantee I'm a clean-up butcher.
Next item, please, mister.
Mr. Chairman, our next item that's for your consideration is a PUD amendment. This is submitted by GM Shea Architects on behalf of Meredith Belford to create a form-based code community. This property consists of four-hundred-and-fifty-seven acres and is located on K Creek Road and Interstate Ninety-Five. It has, it has frontage on I-95, and you can see there the parcel numbers that are associated with it. This is a picture of the newspaper ad and the sign. You can see this is on K Creek Road, that's where the Charlie Butler Road terminates into K Creek Road. The property is there on the left-hand side. This is an aerial view just showing the vicinity of the property. This is in, you'll recall, some of you will recall, that this was a PUD that was approved by the Board of Commissioners back in two thousand nine for Ms. Meredith's mother. And you can see the outline of it, this is I-95, the exit ramp, and it kind of goes here, and this is K Creek Road, where, where the, you just saw the sign located right there. And the zoning map, you can see that this, this is in a diagonal hatch there, that's, that means it's PUD. You can see it's adjacent to a commercial piece of property there, and there's a good bit of agricultural property around it, but it's near Exit Seventy-Six. Flood map, you can see that there is some significant floodplains along the creek there on this property, but all this property up here and this property over here is all out of the floodplains and developable property. This is the narrative, the, what they'd like to do is have a form-based code community. It's gonna be predominantly residential, but they do want to have the option to allow some local office and retail and business-type uses and some small farms, and they also want to have some cottage industries distributed throughout this as well. This is the proposed layout of the property. You can see, remember, we looked at all this, this was the area that's outside the floodplain, so this is where they're proposing to put the development. You can see a couple of spine roads going through there, predominantly residential lots, but at the intersections, they're proposing to have some flexibility to allow for some, some business and office uses in there. And along the interstate frontage here, up in this area and down below here, they've got some areas identified for local industry. And by this, I'll, I'll let the applicant come and specify a little bit more about what they're doing, but they're wanting to do some localized limited industry. So this is just some renderings of the, of the architecture that they'd like to incorporate in this project, this kind of unique renicular architecture, some village lots, just the different types of building types that they'd like to have in this development. And, you know, just specify what the corner lots would look like, what the local industry lots would look like, the ones that we just pointed out, they were up on the I-95 frontage. And then they will also have, they're planning to have some civic spaces in there and some sustainable farming-type operations. Our zoning analysis is this, does a property have reasonable economic value as currently zoned? Our answer is yes, because it is already zoned as a PUD, and they do have the right to develop residential in this, in this property. Number two, does a proposed use conform to the joint land use study? It does. Number three, does a proposed use conform with the Liberty County Comprehensive Plan? Our answer is yes. The Comprehensive Plan identifies this area as mixed use, and this PUD would have both commercial and residential uses in it. Number four, would there be an adverse effect on the value and usability of nearby properties? Our answer is no. Number five, is this proposed use suitable in view of nearby uses? We said yes. Number six, would a zoning proposal create an undue burden on transportation, utilities, transit schools, utilities, and public safety? Number six, would a zoning proposal create an undue burden on transportation, utilities, transit schools, utilities, and public safety? Our answer there is yes. This project does not propose any internal paved roads and has no direct access on the public road. So, uh, the point there is that they are, they are requesting to be able to use non-paved streets in this development. And as you saw from the sign earlier, the picture of the sign I had, it front, the main access of this property is K Creek Road, which is unpaved road. So that is one drawback of, of this development as proposed. Number seven, would this allow a short-term gain at the expense of our long-term local goals? No. Number eight, would this change cause a domino effect and encourage sprawl? Our answer there is no. Number nine, are there unique historical sites with, which may be adversely impacted? Our answer there is that there is a cemetery on the property that is planned to be protected and developed around. Number ten, is this parcel in a flood hazard area? I showed you the map that shows that some of this property is in the flood hazard AE zone. Number eleven, is it spot zoning and unrelated to the existing pattern of development? And our answer there is no, it's already an existing PUD. And number twelve, are there unique conditions with support, approval, or denial? Uh, we, we've identified there, the existing PUD already allows residential and commercial, so really there's no change in that sense. And then the second point there is there's no access in the paved public road system, and that was a problem that, that the staff had in, in evaluating this proposal. Planning Commission heard this request at their November meeting, and they recommended approval with standard and special conditions. And there's the standard conditions, the approval, uh, the special conditions here, I'll read those out for you. The applicant shall provide paved access to the existing county maintained public road system. Number two, all internal roads shall be, shall have a sixty-foot right-of-way and then be paved with asphalt or concrete per county pavement standards. Number three, all uses designated in, on the PUD as local industry, the ones that I showed you along the interstate for local industry, must receive conditional use approval individually by the Board of Commissioners. So, basically, uh, the recommendation is that they, they could have flexibility within the, within development as far as allowing, uh, some of those, uh, non-residential uses at the intersections, but all those uses that are going to be fronting on, um, on I-95 would need to have a conditional use by the Board of Commissioners before they could be developed. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Chairman, I, I had a question, uh, and you just pointed that out under special conditions there. Um, but they want to have paved road, or with the special conditions, they are going to abide by these three items?
They were proposing to have non-paved roads, and of course, their property does not currently, uh, front on the, the, the paved county road system. So it's, the only access is on K Creek Road, which is a dirt road.
The county maintains?
Yes, the county maintains.
That currently?
So, so, we, we didn't agree with that. We presented that as a condition to the Planning Commission, and they accepted that, that they need to pave access to the existing county road system, and that all internal roads, all the new roads that they'll build within this, also have to be paved. We, we didn't accept the recommendation for dirt roads within the development. So, that's, that's called out as a special condition. Overall, the form-based code concept is okay, but we just feel like that, uh, they need to abide by the county's road standards, that all the roads they build need to be paved, and they need to have paved access to the county's road system.
So I know this is just a, a rezoning or a PUD amendment?
This is a PUD amendment. There's, there's an existing PUD there, and they just wanted to amend that.
Will they come back with the, um, plaits or?
They will have to come back with any plaits. Yeah, there, there'll be final development plans that'll have to be approved by the Board of Commissioners as, when they cut these lots up.
And then we'll see the design?
That's right.
At that time?
The Chair, on the backside of you. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You too, Commissioner.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Yeah, go back to K Creek Road.
That'll be where you got your sign, right there.
Yep, look at the sign.
How wide is that road?
I don't know which Trent we're here, I would say that the road bed itself is maybe no more than twenty feet wide, twenty-two feet wide?
Eighteen and a half.
Okay.
Eighteen and a half. One car has to almost get in the ditch to let another car come out. Now, when we wanted to pave that road a long time ago, it was a big no. A big no. Now, look like the county, if we accept this project, the counties now have to go in there and do something with their road, apparently. Or is that going to be up to the, the developer?
That, that is the Planning Commission approved, one of, one of the special conditions from the Planning Commission is that they would have to provide paved access to the county's road system.
But I'm talking about the part that the county maintains, because we maintain, uh, right at close to a half a mile.
K Creek Road.
Yes, on the east side.
Right.
So how's that work, Mr. Chairman?
The special condition is that the developer would pay that.
But it's a county road.
That's right. The county and the developer would have to work that out in some way.
Now.
Two, two options there. One, and I was going to ask this, I apologize. It, you know, I think from a staff perspective, that whether it's in here or whether it comes back on a plat, that they need to explore another dedicated means of ingress and egress and not just go to one road section. Um, so, I, I don't know whether the board needs to take care of that now or later. The, the other could be covered through the same language that we just used for this other development, which would require the development agreement, which would then put some responsibility on any developer to help do that instead of the county having to fund that, or in addition to the county helping. So, a couple of options, a couple of options there.
Okay.
Commissioner Stevens, let me ask one question. You was talking about the K Road. After you get past the cemetery, I know there's some residents along there, but the last time I was down there, it just was growed up.
Right. That's the part that comes up behind McDonald's.
Right.
And behind the, uh.
Right, yeah.
Barbecue, barbecue place, yeah. Smoking pig, uh-huh.
Do what?
Behind, behind McDonald's.
Right.
Right.
I just, um, and so that, that's, have we been maintaining it to there?
Yes. We remain, not up to McDonald's, but up to Ms. Laura Roberts' house, which is on the left-hand side.
Petitioner here, sir?
Jeff, uh, I know this is a rezoning, but we had a meeting, well, we had a meeting, and we talked about the water situation. Have they, have that been, have that surfaced? I know we can talk about rezoning, but we don't, if we're not taking care of everything, then we are piecemealing it.
This is in the Development Authority to Water Service area, so they would have to get their water from the Development Authority.
And sewage?
Yes. They, they, they had some discussions with the, uh, with the City of Midway about possibly annexing, but now they, they're proposing to stay out of the City of Midway, and so they would be in the Development Authority's Water Service area, and I think they might be looking at subject tanks for the sewage disposal.
So, one more question. So all of the streets within this area will be paved?
If, if you accept our special conditions, that's, they would be paved.
Okay. And the reason why I'm saying that, everyone, because District One, the last time Trent did a check for us, District One had a total of seven subdivisions that's not paved, and the only district in the whole entire county that's like that. I don't need any more, unless it's paved.
Petitioner?
Good evening, Commissioners.
Hello, sir.
My name is Patrick Shea, and I'm Senior Principal with GM Shea Architects. And we have worked closely with Stevens Hill Incorporated and the Belfords to help formulate a plan that is, uh, not in fact a rezoning, the property is already zoned, and the, the zoning that's in place now is actually much more intensive in its proposed use than what we're proposing. It's currently, uh, approved for multifamily housing and commercial development. Uh, what we're proposing is much less dense and has a much, uh, greater area for conservation. So we're actually, uh, proposing, uh, amended master plan, not rezoning the property per se, uh, that is less intense in what its use is, uh, proposed than what is its existing. Um, and we have had, uh, discussions, including at the Plan, the Planning Commission, about the, uh, the definition of paved roads. We never proposed that they would be unpaved roads. What we proposed was that we investigate alternative paving systems that are hard paved, but they're not necessarily asphalt or concrete. And we, we, in our, uh, submission to the, uh, for the, the zoning amendment, included examples of some of those paving systems. At the Planning Commission meeting, uh, the, the, uh, county engineer, uh, came forward and said that, although he could not speak exactly to the systems that we were proposing, that there was some openness to the flexibility, but we all understand it's going to be hard paved. It's not going to be dirt roads like, uh, K Creek Road is existing. Also, um, it would be possible, does this point?
Yes, right there on the green, yes.
So, we would only be getting onto K Creek Road in our current plan, just very slightly to the left and to the right of Charlie Butler Road. We can, we can reorient our entrance and egress so that it goes straight across to Charlie Butler Road. We don't have a problem with doing whatever the county engineer recommends for the paving in that intersection that's there. But we don't intend to rely on K Creek Road for ingress and egress, uh, to the property other than right there at that one intersection with Charlie Butler Road. You can see there's an existing, uh, pond that's there right now, so we'd probably have to do some grading work in that area in order to have an alignment with Charlie Butler Road, but that's something that we're certainly willing to do. The, the overall concept is to do, uh, a development which is regulated, uh, by its form, which is to say that the size of the buildings, uh, and the, uh, use of the, the buildings is not, uh, determined, uh, by a, a, a map that says this one's going to be residential, and this one's going to be commercial, and this one's going to be agricultural, so we can have farm lots. But that the whole property would have flexibility to be any of those things. We, we did a lot of study, and, and we really wanted to try and come up with basically what I would call a, a country village, uh, very much like, uh, what might have been, uh, the pattern here in Liberty County a hundred years ago or a hundred and fifty years ago. We heard a lot of, uh, feedback from people that lived in the neighborhood about the history of the property, and that it had once been given over entirely to local agriculture, uh, it's now silviculture. And so we wanted to do a plan that fostered the opportunity for people, if they wanted to, to be able to grow food, and in some cases on some of the larger lots, even be able to have livestock. So, what we want is a, a plan that would allow for local industry and, uh, local people to be able to live off the land and live so in a sustainable way. As far as the local industry goes, we don't have any particular, uh, industrial targets, but the idea would be relatively small lots. I think the largest one that we've shown on our plan is about five acres. Most of them are closer to three, so you can see there would be relatively small-scale buildings. And the idea would be able to try and attack, attract people who, uh, would like to have, uh, access ultimately to, uh, Island's Highway, uh, and perhaps to, to I-95. Uh, but that, uh, they would be relatively, uh, uh, easy to, uh, buffer and also to, uh, keep from having a negative impact. We wouldn't be able to do the local industry that's along this part of the property right here until we were able to make some sort of an arrangement. And we've had discussions with the, the adjacent property owners, been a lot of discussion about there being a frontage road in that area, some other things that are necessary in order to be able to come through and connect up to, uh, the Island's Highway in this area. None of that's exactly settled yet, so there wouldn't be any, uh, of the light industrial development unless and until that, that was affected. There wouldn't be any point, wouldn't want to, nobody would want to locate in there. So that would eventually provide that second, uh, uh, access to that. It's a total of about three hundred sites, uh, so, you know, we're talking about, uh, if they were mostly residential on the order of maybe nine hundred residents, so the traffic impact would be relatively low. But to your, to your, to address your concern, we're not proposing dirt roads. What we'd like to is have the opportunity and the flexibility to look at alternative paving systems that are hard paved, but they just are not asphalt or concrete, okay?
Mr. Brown? Do we have, well, the county, first of all, don't have any paving equipment, but to put down anything else less than that, it would be hard if we have to go back in and make a patch or repair, am I correct?
Yes, I think, I think, you know, um, that, I think that is the main concern, not necessarily it's asphalt, but if they're proposed to be turned over to the county, that it'd be some kind of substance that is looked at that the county can repair and do, and we're only geared to do asphalt at this point. So that would need to be a discussion.
Right.
Uh, on alternative paving systems, and that you could use a sweet, street sweeper on to do curb and gutter work and things like that if you had to. Um, and, and just as a side note, too, I'm familiar with, I, I don't know whether you've seen the proposed access management plan for that section of corridor along that roadway, but, uh, that wouldn't necessarily provide another ingress, egress point for you because that'd be too close to the exit. So, you know, again, I'd recommend that, much like you do subdivisions, you require to guarantee entrance and exits to subdivisions, this is a traffic generator, and would, would ask that y'all consider requiring a secondary guaranteed entrance and exit.
And, uh, I keep hearing you referencing Island's Highway. Island's Highway doesn't start until you get on the east side of Ninety-Five.
This, this, this section right here is, is, uh, is that Overtorpe Highway when it gets there?
Overtorpe Highway.
Okay.
Oh, 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 Overtorpe Highway.
Yep. Well, we, we, these are things that we can work out, uh, when we do the, the detailed plans, when it comes back for the actual plotting and the subdivision. What we're asking for tonight is for you to allow us to amend the PUD from what it was before, and none of these road issues were resolved in two thousand nine, that I'm aware of, but what it was before, which was a much more intense, uh, land use that was approved, to a less intense land use, and allow us then to come back and work out the details with your county staff and county engineer and so forth, which we're happy to do.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I've had some phone calls about the, uh, the pond.
Yep.
And the cemetery. Will you all fence that pond in before you give it to the community, or is that y'all planning to donate it to the community?
There have been discussions with, uh, uh, Midway, but then, uh, that we're not, at this point, committed to being annexed into, into Midway. I don't know that that would become a, a public asset, uh, but it, it would be limited access. In other words, we don't want people to, to come in there that are uninvited. So, uh, yes, there, there would be, uh, the plans for both the cemetery and for that pond to, to make sure that there was secured access.
So actually, who owns the cemetery?
Uh, the Meredith Belford and her family. The cemetery is, uh, in that parcel right there. It's not a, um...
So it's not a, it's a private-owned cemetery?
It is, and it's been used by families in the area, but, uh, it's never been deeded or anything. And we're going to preserve that and make that available to the families in the area so that they can continue to, uh, do what they've been doing, and, and to be able to come there and pay respects.
All right. All right. Thank you, sir. Um, Mr. Brown, I guess we need to, um, the... Recommendation you were making about the two egress and egress, and something that you made a recommendation? Yeah.
Right.
To be able to maintain whatever source it is.
But we have someone to speak, uh?
It is only Mr. Shea for this one.
Okay. You're it.
Am I excused? Do you have more questions?
No. Ready?
You got those two?
Does anybody else from the audience?
Mr. Stevens, I wanted to ask, um, so...
No.
The roads will be, will in the end belong, in that subdivision, will belong to us? Or are you going to keep, you're going to hold the, the road yourself?
The intention is for them to be private. There's not, the intention is not to have them dedicated, but the subdivision regulations say that they have to meet county standards.
Right, they can meet county standards, but I mean, any maintenance that would have to be done on them would, I guess we could defer all of that to you.
That's correct.
I mean, I know where one is now, well, actually, two of them, that they built the subdivision and, and the roads, were coming apart, so, and even, but traded apart. You know, we were asked to come in and fix them, and that's, that's one thing that...
Right.
I mean, if you're going to maintain ownership of the roads, I understand that, because if they're cobblestone, then we'll have to fix them. If they're concrete, we'll have to fix them. So, um, I guess that's in that, but then, I mean, you've got, I mean...
That, that would be the concern is... That would be the concern, is the private road systems, at least the history of the county, has been that they eventually turn over so many times that they become public, and then you end up with a
A full house.
You can't maintain.
And then we have another full house in here.
Correct.
Absolutely.
Correct. So, it's better to have them on a surface you can maintain if the private maintenance does not continue.
Right, that's correct. That's what I'm getting at.
And, Mr. Chair, just real quick, and I guess just piggybacking off of that, I thought the commission, we decided that the only way that we'd keep a road private would be if it was in a gated community. Isn't that some discussion that we had previously? Or was that just in my head?
I don't remember. Gated. I remember the topic like that.
We did discuss that.
We
I don't think.
I know it was discussed. I don't know where we went, but again, I'm not in favor of developers saying that they're going to keep the road private and do their own thing, because you and I both know, in the last couple of years, what happens? And, nothing against you, but
It's not you.
Again, I'm not going to be in this seat forever, and you're not going to be on this earth forever, but someone else is going to buy a house, even in that subdivision, 15, 20 years from now. The roads are going to be bad, and they're going to be coming right in here, and saying that they are taxpayers, and that we need to fix their roads, but legally, we can't because it's a private road. And that was the issues that we've been having, especially in your district, for numerous years, so if that's the answer, private roads, I don't, that's just me.
Private roads built to county standards.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, county roads built to our standards,
Yeah.
But then you also are saying alternative methods,
You did.
And we don't have any alternative methods to be able to.
So, again, as Mr. Schae pointed out, I mean, that's, you know, you could approve the PUD amendment, but then those things would be subject to the conditions of final plat approval when they came in, and you could, you know, you could note those then along with it. I just want him to be aware of the secondary entrance, though,
Yeah.
Because he needs to make plans when he's doing the plat for that piece, but the other, I think, could be worked out with final plat submitted to y'all back.
Right, okay, so you're, just get clarification, only thing we're doing is just amending, but
PUD.
But he will still have to come back in front of us
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Whenever it's time. About the roads?
Whole thing.
And it's, okay, and secondary?
The whole subdivision.
Understand, that's all we're doing.
The whole, yeah.
Right? Am I correct, Mr. Stevens?
I'm trying to get clarification, too, right.
And then the PUD.
Because I know it's
It's not even a rezoning, it's just a change for the PUD.
But we'll see you again.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Stevens?
Chairman, I make a motion that we amend the PUD for this project.
Motion second, we amend the PUD request from this gentleman for this corporation. Any further discussion?
Again, just for clarification, he's coming back in front of us.
Has to.
Okay, all right.
Could I ask you a question, Mr. Chairman? Before you vote, do you want to incorporate those same, I mean, you mentioned impacts outside of that area? Do you want, not that you have to do it, but would you consider amending that to add that additional language?
To the roads?
For proposed developer agreements with the board of commissioners, period, period over infrastructure.
Just state me here.
Yes.
Yes.
Those would be in addition to any other standards by the planning commission.
That we add this amendment to the motion.
Yes, sir.
Can I have a copy of that?
Absolutely. Glad to get you one.
All right, thank you, sir.
We didn't vote, did we?
Yeah, let's take a vote, Mr. Chairman, if you can.
All in favor? I thought we did vote.
I see a picture on there, too, Commissioner Frazier, it says, "Local Industry Lots", and there's a water park in there.
Hopefully, they do, because, you know, I've been fighting for family entertainment since my son was 10. He's in middle school now. Hopefully, he'll be able to at least work at one before he leaves Liberty County.
Resonation 2022-075.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this is the last one. This is a petition that was submitted by Blue Scope Properties Group, the applicant on behalf of CMJ Investments, they're the property owner, to rezon 154.5 acre, acres of land, more or less, from A1 agriculture to I1 industrial for warehouse distribution complex on Island's Highway. And you can see there the partial numbers that, or the partial number, is one big 700-acre tract of land that they want to rezon a portion of, 154 acres. You can see our sign here along Island's Highway, the ad in the newspaper. You can see the plat here of the property. As I said, this is a plat, 154-acre plat of a much larger tract of land that goes all the way up to the property that you rezoned back in the spring, and it goes all the way down past Brigdon Road, so it's a long sprawling piece of property, and that's why it goes around behind Ms. Martha's house, because it's just a big disjointed piece of property. But they're only talking about 150 acres just up here, just kind of catty-cornered across from the Dorchester Village School. Okay, you can see here, this is the, just kind of for your reference, this is Island's Highway, this is the Hooker Building here, this is the property, there's a little out parcel here, and the, you can see Brigdon Road is right here, so that's the overall, it's part of this bigger tract here that goes all the way down this way, down here, even goes across Brigdon Road and wraps in behind Ms. Martha's house there. So, that's the layout of this property, but we're talking about just the area outlined in red, it's 150.
Not sure they're hearing you, Jeff, say it again.
Okay, we're just talking about the 150-acre piece of property right here, directly across from Hooker, that's outlined in red. We're not talking about all the rest of the property, that will remain as it's currently zoned. Okay, and then you can see the zoning map, you can see across the street here, the industrial, existing industrial properties over here in Tradeport East are already zoned industrial. This is the property that was mentioned that was zoned earlier in the spring for industrial. And the flood map, you can see that there aren't any flood plains on this property, but there are some nearby along the creeks to the rear, on the other side of Dorchester Village Road. And this is a site plan, you can see Island's Highway here, they're proposing an access here and an access here, directly across from the back access to Hooker there. This is a 1.3 million square foot building, this is a 800 and something square foot, 800,000 square foot building, and this is a much smaller building here, so they're proposing three buildings, and you can see their proposed pond here, so they're talking about an access here, an access here, they're proposing buffering along Island's Highway here and buffering along this creek property over here. And you see the buffers there, there's another showing the buffers there along that creek, buffers here along Island's Highway, and then there's an existing berm here, and they're proposing a buffer here along these neighboring properties over here that front on Brigdon Our zoning analysis, does a property currently have reasonable economic value as currently zoned? The answer is yes. Does a property conform to the J-LAS study? The answer is yes. Number three, does a property conform to the Liberty County Comprehensive Plan? Our answer is no, due to its current zoning ag forestry, it was included in the comprehensive plan as ag forestry. Number four, will there be an adverse effect on the value and usability of nearby properties? We've indicated yes there, while part of it is directly across Island's Highway from Tradeport East Industrial Park, which is where the Hooker Building is located. It also surrounds an abut agricultureally zoned properties, which could be mitigated by buffers, as we mentioned in the last industrial request. Number five, is a proposed use suitable in view of nearby uses? We've noted that it is directly across the street from Tradeport East. Number six, would a zoning proposal create an undue burden on transportation, including streets, transit, schools, utilities, and provision of public safety? We've got two points there, industrial development of this property will increase traffic, and number two, the county is intending, as you've heard much about, intended to improve develop Island's Highway beyond this point, and that's going to be done through those development agreements that we talked about earlier, that you passed a resolution on earlier in the fall. Number seven, will this allow a short-term gain at the expense of our long-term goals? No. Number eight, will this change, will this change cause a domino effect or encourage sprawl, similar to the last one? Our answer there is yes, it could possibly cause additional requests. Number nine, are there unique historical sites which may be adversely impacted? Our answer there is no. Is this parcel a flood hazard area? No. Number 11, is it spot zoning and unrelated to the existing pattern of development? No, it's directly across the street from Tradeport East. Number 12, are there unique conditions which support approval or denial of this request? And our answer there is it's in close proximity to other industrial zones that can be easily accessed off of I-95 due to its proximity. Planning Commission heard this at their November meeting, and this one actually was a split vote. We had six commissioners there, and it was a three-to-three vote with no recommendation for you, so I do apologize for that, that we don't have any conclusive recommendation for you, but our staff recommendation was approval with standard conditions, and this one special condition, that the applicant preserve a, or plant, a 100-foot vegetative buffer from Island's Highway, and also a 50-foot vegetative buffer from the following neighboring properties, and those are the individual properties that I pointed out earlier along, that front along Brigdon Road. So, that was a special condition that the staff recommended, but again, the planning commission had a hung jury on that one, and they have no recommendation for you. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, can you recall what initiated the tie vote?
There was some discussion, there was a lot of participation from the audience that night. There was a lot of back-and-forth dialogue, and I think the planning commissioners were trying to come up with some kind of a buffer alternative in addition to what we recommended along the back of the property that kind of faces Dorchester Village Road, and they just couldn't agree on what it would be, so they just, they went for a vote, and three of them were against the project, and three were for, so.
So, I guess my question, what y'all came up with, did this satisfy the planning commissioner?
No.
The planning commission, or did it satisfy the citizens?
No.
I think our staff recommendation partially satisfied the planning commission, but there was a lot of testimony at that meeting about the property that's, the face of the property that would be facing Dorchester Village Road. I guess concern, I mean, it's all owned by the same owner, I can take you back and show you the, show you the map, just to kind of give you a visual of what we're talking about. As I mentioned earlier, all this property here is owned by the owner of the property that owns this property, so they're really their own buffer, but the concern that was brought up is if they timber this property, then these folks that live over here on Dorchester Village Road have a clear view of the back of a warehouse, so where the planning commission got hung up was what to do with this buffer along this part of the property. Granted, right now, there's a substantial buffer, it's like 1,600 feet of buffer between here and Dorchester Village Road, but in the event that that was clear-cut or timbered, you wouldn't, you'd still have the distance, but you'd have a clear line of sight.
Jeff, that's Island's Highway right there?
Yes, sir.
How close is that to Island's Highway right there?
I don't think this is
Is this going to be another one of those projects, like what we're turning the corner, and you're looking at that building?
Like Hooker? It is a similar, it is a similar-sized building to Hooker, and it's really, the way this shows, it's in the same proximity to Island's Highway.
As Hooker furnished?
That's right, that's right.
And that building can't be pushed back any further?
It certainly could be if it's the will of the board of commissioners, but as it's proposed, this is where they would like to see the property be put, and the staff had recommended a 100-foot buffer along Island's Highway and a 50-foot buffer with a berm on this side, so that would be at least 100 foot, feet off of the Island's Highway, but...
Okay, now, where is Brigdon Road at?
Brigdon Road is right down here, that's right.
Is that it?
That's Brigdon Road, yes, sir.
So, that's the Brigdon property right there?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Chairman, I may come back with...
Some other questions from other commissioners? Is that a petitioner here, Jeff?
Yes, sir.
All petitioners. Joey, am I getting you out of sync with your?
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. My name's Eric Weinco, with Blue Scope Properties Group. Our offices, we office out of Kansas City, I know that comes up a lot, but we did just finish a project in the Tradeport East Business Center, so we're business owners and taxpayers. We're excited about the delivery of this recent project at Tradeport East Business Center, and we're excited to be in front of you tonight to talk about this opportunity. For about 10 years now, Blue Scope has been working in the region on various development projects, and we've delivered a lot of successful projects to, with companies that include Coca-Cola, Amazon, and Goya. We're here tonight to seek your support for a 154-acre site along Island's Highway, directly adjacent to Tradeport East Business Center, as Jeff outlined. We understand the importance of this application and its impact on the county. We believe this development is a logical next step for the area, and will add to the tax base and provide employment opportunities. We appreciate the recommendation for approval from the planning commission, and have worked closely with them over the last several months to try and shape our project to address some of the concerns that have been brought up by the community in the previous applications. We want to be a good neighbor, we want to find a way to work in tandem with the community. One way that we've done that, initially when we started the project, we got with Trent Long, because we really wanted to understand a little bit more about the imminent improvements to Island's Highway. I think that's an important component to what's going on here, and we're for that, we're for, you know, our impact fees will most likely trickle down to help pay for all those improvements, and so it doesn't benefit us to not have a scenario where it's not safe out there. And so, one of the things that we initially did on this site was limit, what we wanted was three access points onto Island's Highway, we limited it down to two, and we aligned it with the curb cuts across Tradeport, across Island's Highway with the Tradeport Business Center. So, there's been a lot of thought put into how we can orient our project in relation to Tradeport, to help address the valid concerns that have been raised. And like I said, we are, we are for a safe route in and out, and we're absolutely in favor of a solution. Our project will take three to five years before it's fully built out, and, you know, the plans have been laid, hopefully, to address islands. Other points that were brought up that I just want to highlight, roughly, you know, up to 900 feet along the south edge or southeast edge of the back of the site, it is separated by, you know, a sizable amount of trees, and then along the Brigdon roadside of this site, in the planning commission meeting, the, we were for, we're accepting of the special conditions of approval, both of them. We went further and offered up a berm in the, in the meeting along the Brigdon roadside. It's there, we would preserve it, so I would add that for consideration tonight. the other thing that I would like to comment on is that there's been a lot of talk, and I've attended some of the town halls, I've tried to listen, and there's been a lot of talk about, you know, placing a hold on development until we're ready, or, and what I would, what I would say to that is that it really is a, it really is a partnership. We, when we built our project in Tradeport East, our, we didn't donate a road, but we certainly donated, or sorry, we didn't donate a building, we certainly donated a road. We certainly donated a road. Trade Port East Boulevard is about a million-dollar road that will be turned over to the city, along with storm sewers and water mains and the like. For this particular project, we're going to have to go tap into both water and sanitary. And that would eventually go back to the county as well. So that's pretty much everything I wanted to highlight. And I have a team of people here that will be able to address any technical issues that may come up. So I'll turn it over to you for the next step.
Yes, sir.
The first person is Mr. Don Hartley, if he is still here. Okay, Ms. Nancy Mayer?
Can you hear me? I'm sorry if I got so upset and said that election is coming. It's just my heart is in this, but election is coming, but that's okay. This is the same problem, going to be the same problem with the other property. Oh, I'm sorry. The same problem as with the other property, a domino effect. We all know who owns this property. This part is saying, oh, we're going to develop this, and then it will go down towards Dorchester Road and up towards Dorchester Village Road. All of it. Please don't tell me it won't, because it will. Another... Sir? Going to tap into the water and the sewage, where's the water coming from? All of these buildings up here, it just occurred to me, they're going to drain our aquifer. I have a well. Does that mean that, and I'm at the end of the road on Colonel's Island. Can't get any further, am I going to have to buy a saline solution? To change my river water so I can have water? And I don't even live close to where these poor people will be. How can you do that to them? Beep, 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 beep. One beep. From me, but 7,000 trucks a day, 24/7. Beep, 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 beep. Two accesses on Islands Highway where you said there would be no more access. I even, I cannot understand it. Please, at least table your decision. Thank you, Mr. Frazier, for a voice of reason. And Mr. Stevens, and I don't know who the other, was it you, Mr. Gilliard, who voted no? Mr. Jones, thank you so much. Listen to a voice of reason. Wait, we don't need all of this stuff. Check it out. Where's the water coming from? Where's it going? Where's the sewage coming from? What are you going to do to our wetlands? Repetition after repetition after repetition. I cannot understand it. Table it until you know the answer.
Next on here, Mr. Randy Dykes. I don't believe...
Randy Dykes is not here, but I'm here, representing my son. And I'm also representing me. Does that mean I get six minutes?
Ma'am, no, ma'am.
I just want to show y'all the mouth. I want you to look at the mouth. This is me right here. This is me right here, right here, right here, right here. That's me. That's me, right here.
Yes, ma'am.
Right here. You just approved one in front of you. So now I'm here fighting to not approve zoning change that will cause a domino effect, just like the rezoning of this is going to cause a domino effect that you said wasn't? It is? The new bridge is going to be a domino effect? If you approve this, it's going to be a domino effect also? I reside at 2269 Islands Highway. I ask that you vote to disapprove these rezoning requests based on the fact that it doesn't meet the future land use designations in the current state-approved comprehensive plan. This is a valid, court-backed defense to disapproving a rezoning request. The current meetings scheduled to update the comprehensive plan are apparently being held to mirror rezoning approval requests such as this, while hoping to appease the state and not be looked upon as violating the plan. At a minimum, these rezoning requests, which you've already rezoned one, should be tabled until the current comprehensive plan update has been completed. If this rezoning is approved, then it shows you are not listening to us. You don't care about us. Obviously, the last one, thank you for voting no on the first one. Thank you, sir. And to the ones that approved it, it's not your front yard. It's not your backyard. You're not the one that will look out this window and see one. Look out this window and see one. Right now, I'm just a taxpayer. I'm not, you know, that's all we're looked at, is a taxpayer. We're not looked at as residents of Liberty County. An approval of these rezonings would cause further harm upon the historic center, Dorchester Cemetery, historic homes, contrary to what Mr. Rickett says. It will cause more harm on the Liberty Historic Trail, ultimately resulting in additional rezonings, multiple dangerous ingress and egress driveways for hundreds of tractor-trailers to come and go through the only, through the only route hundreds of residents have to commute each day. There should have been a master plan that would have regulated industrial traffic in and out of a main entrance. Don't continue destroying the peaceful tranquility of the east coast of Liberty County by allowing this area to become overrun with tractor-trailers, noise, depleting the natural wildlife, affecting natural flood plans, and changing natural drainage patterns. I need water. Impress...
Your time is really up, Ms. Dykes.
Well, I know, but I got one more thing I've got to say. Okay. I want to impress again the dangers that I brought up that could happen when you get all of these multiple warehouses in there. The dangers to the residents that live in this area. Does that not bother y'all? Does that not concern you? That we, the taxpayers, we, the citizens, are being endangered by these rezonings that you're approving? You know, I'm just appalled, I'm appalled, that you rezoned that one. This one, for New Bridge. That means domino effect, all that. Are you smiling at me?
Oh, yeah, we do. Yeah, all the time, Marcy.
Ms. Chairman, please.
So it's going to be a domino effect?
You well exceeded your time, Mr. Dykes. Thank you. Is there another, Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir, Ms. Marcy Hamilton.
Marcy.
Hello, Mr. Lovett.
Hello, how are you?
I'm good. It's about 3 minutes and 20 seconds.
All right, you're timed.
So I will try to read quickly. Liberty County's goal and vision is stated in our comp plan as wanting to be the premier community in coastal Georgia in which to live, work, and visit. This vision is supposed to be one of protecting our community character, encouraging preservation of our history, and promoting the use of our natural assets. It's supposed to be one of ensuring protection of environmental areas, allowing for more open space, protecting the character of rural communities such as ours, and respect of our environment and our natural resources. Does any of what is happening in East Liberty right now correlate with Liberty County's very own vision and comp plan? No, it doesn't. Our plan states that industrial land use should have development regulations, including sensitivity to surrounding land uses such as residential, and that should be emphasized when planning for industrial uses. Yet we seem to be okay right now with putting warehouses in front of residents' homes on Old Dorchester Village Road, impacting their quality of life and property values. Our comprehensive plan suggests that industrial uses should be generally located away from existing or planned residential areas and sited so as not to travel through less intensive land uses, such as Fort Morris roads and Old Sunbury Road, which are getting semi-truck traffic daily right now. When the trucks miss their turn, they go down the road and out on Fort Morris and up Islands Highway way down. The recommended development pattern for agriculture land includes steering development away from such areas of naturally and environmentally sensitive resources, such as wetlands that you saw on that other gentleman's acreage. Our plan recommends to preserve land by setting it aside for natural, environmental, and educational areas, public parks, trails, or garden belts. I ask again, how is warehouse development helping Liberty County achieve any of their visions and goals set forth in our comprehensive plan that is currently in place? Instead of doing any of this, we are putting in millions and millions of square feet of industrial warehouse space, I believe roughly 10.6 million square feet, give or take, right next to residents' homes. We are wiping out trees and wildlife and damaging our environment and ecosystem. How is this not going to impact the environment that we profess to have respect for in our very own comprehensive plan? This industrial development will bring in an additional 6,694 vehicles, according to the DRI done by the DCA. These additional vehicles on our one-way-in, one-way-out, two-lane road will endanger public safety. Where is the traffic study? Where's the funding for the widening of the road? Why are we not concerned about the citizens? Why are we having more roads in and out with these warehouses? The Blue Scope property is part of a much larger parcel that I believe we all know will more than likely be expanded to include the entirety of that parcel for industrial development, and would bring more warehouses in front of the residents of Old Dorchester Village Road. I don't believe, they've been saying that it's adjacent to Trade Port. I don't think it's adjacent, it's across the street from Trade Port East. It's not adjacent. It's not like the first zoning property where it is actually adjacent. This is going across the road right now. We simply do not have the infrastructure available right now to support this massive industrial development. We just saw a house burn down the other night, one and a half miles from a fire station, burnt to the ground because we ran out of water, because we didn't have a ladder truck, because pumps were not used to take water from the river. This doesn't bode well for an industrial fire or even a residential fire. Where will all the stormwater go once the ground is covered in impervious surfaces? Will our water be able to support the needs of both industrial development and residence? So many questions need to be addressed and answered by the county before any more industrial development progresses. In light of the fact that the Blue Scope property is coming to you without a recommendation from the LCPC, I would like to request that you either table the rezoning request or deny it totally, as well, well, we've already done the Liberty logistics, until more studies are done and the appropriate infrastructure has been put in place. I also don't believe there should be any more industrial south of Islands Highway. If you do indeed approve these rezoning requests, I ask that the benefits for the public be considered, such as bike paths, green space, pedestrian, bike lanes, sidewalks. I see some lovely sidewalks here in Heinsville, but we don't have any of the fun stuff like that over on our side. We don't get the restaurants, the sidewalks, anything. Anyway, if you're going to pave what we consider to be our paradise, we hope that you will at least be gracious enough to provide some things for the citizens whose quality of life you're impacting with this rapid, uncontrolled, and unwanted industrial growth. Thank you.
Ms. Chairman, the next person is Mr. Jerry Baysmore.
Can you do as well as she did with her speed reading?
I don't need any notes, it's pretty much, I don't need any notes, it's pretty much obvious what's going on. And if you were to take a vote of the 7,000 residents of East Liberty County, you think they would want this? No, they wouldn't want this. They don't want, everybody I've talked to does not want this. And then you've got another problem. Is the county willing to spend a couple of million dollars for more fire equipment? They don't have enough equipment and water to put out just a house fire. How in the world are they going to put out a fire in a warehouse? How long is that going to stay going? And of course, when you have a fire, what do you have? Smoke, smog, everything else. And then you're talking about winding the road, who's going to pay for that? The county's going to pay for that. Now, when you add up all this money, what's going to happen? You're going to vote to go up on our taxes. That's what's going to happen. You're going to have another splosh, you're going to have more property taxes, and it's just going on and on and on. The people in Liberty County do not want this. And that's who voted you in, the people in this county. And you... Listen to the people, please, please.
Thank you.
The next person to the chairman is Ms. Rhonda Durney.
As you well know, Rhonda Durney. There's not McTell's, I can say. We've said, everybody that lives out there has said it over and over and over. I don't understand why the entire onus of this industrialization of the warehouses is all being shoved over on the east end. You know you're devastating the land, our lives, every reason why everybody moved over there. We've all paid our taxes, they've gone up and up and up. You've spent millions upon millions upon millions upon millions of dollars of our tax money related to Trade Port East and what is going on. And there's going to be millions more. And I'm going to, just like everybody else said, nobody wants this. We don't need this in this county. We need responsible development if you're going to develop it. If one of those warehouses catches on fire, God forbid, because our whole area could go up, not just those warehouses. And I'm just going to paraphrase something. I'm sure all of you have heard, "Father forgive them, for they know not what they do." Well, I'm going to say, "Father forgive all of you, because you do know what you're doing."
Mr. Corey Watson.
My name's Corey Watson, I live shouting this from there. And I'm going to tell you right now, this is going to flood our neighborhood. Now, I was smart enough to build my house up on piers, but my neighbors are going to be flooded. But I want to offer a different perspective. Thursday, I had a work order come across my desk, and it said, "Warehouse fire. Assess and repair and advise." So I went, I inspected it, did an assessment and everything over in Port Wentworth, okay? Port Wentworth is struggling right now. So I went and looked at it and everything, and I started asking the people. And I said, "Okay, how long has this been going on?" People in charge is like, "Oh, I don't know, 30 days." I'm like, "Okay, write it up." I said, "Why aren't you on fire watch?" "Oh, no, we was on fire watch for three days." I'm like, "Well, your life safety equipment's not working, you need to be back on fire watch. Consider yourself warned today, you're back on fire watch." Okay, started writing up my report, called local fire marshal. Port Wentworth is like, "We don't have fire marshal anymore. We don't know, you know, call, we don't know who you need to call." So I called the state fire marshal. Then whenever I went and talked to Port Wentworth Fire Department, they said, "30 days, what are you talking about, man?" They said, "That was, that fire was three months ago." I said, "So you're telling me they've been without protection, any life safety equipment, for three months?" They said, "Yes." Wrote all that up and everything. So I'm happy to report, as of today, I went back today, and I got them up to code, okay? But the problem is, is these developers come in, they build, they buy, they sell, they lease out, and not always is the property maintained. There's not too many warehouses in Chatham County, Ryan County, Effingham County I haven't worked in, and I haven't inspected their alarm systems, okay? Liberty County is not ready for this. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Mary Pat Kelly.
She had to leave.
Susan Inman.
All right, thank you, and thanks for hanging in tonight. It's a long night, but we appreciate it, truly. Again, my name is Susan Inman, a coastal advocate for 100 Miles. We're a nonprofit organization that works to protect the coastal communities through education, advocacy, and civic engagement. And I'm going to go through my notes, so try not to repeat, to kind of move this along. But this Blue Scope project and the additional rezoning projects have kind of caused me to think of the Heinsville bypass project... think of the Heinsville bypass project, which you all know will provide a freight route around the cities of Heinsville and Walt Harville to decrease heavy truck traffic. It's because you have the space. But these residents don't have that space when it comes to increasing truck traffic, and that's what will happen tonight if you increase another three warehouses. And this warehouse, BlueScope property, and also the property that's at the southeast corner of I-95, only can use Highway 84 for their entrance and exits to their property. So it will directly impact the residents at all times for these two properties. So use the lessons that you've learned when you were going through the Heinsville bypass, and don't repeat them east of I-95. And then also, I submitted to you earlier today two articles about the forecasted projections of the cargoes coming in, cargo containers coming in, and they're actually on a decline. Throughout the world, China is actually dropping faster. They're predicting in 2023, March, February and March, to be down 15%, 18%. And as you know, like with stock markets, it's the same with the cargo industry. We do have the decrease once we see it overseas. And actually, there was another article that came out today where the chairman of the Port of Authority, Joel Wooton, stated that they are expecting container volumes to also taper down, even with the expansion in Savannah, but also, you may or may not know that the Brunswick Port is also under expansion too, but they're a different port, they're row-on, row-off, carport. And so they are going to try to spread that out, but still, it's on a decline. So is, so my question is, are warehouses the right way for Liberty County's future? Why not, you know, maybe think about the proposal that was just before this one, or your community, conservation communities? They offer mixed uses, which again, offers playgrounds and other sidewalks and other amenities that are beneficial to residents. So in closing, I again ask you to vote no on this proposal, and if, again, if you have any doubts, at minimum, table this vote to possibly come up with other solutions or give it time to work itself out. Thank you, Ian.
Ashley Mosher.
Am I the last one?
No, ma'am.
Am I the last one?
It's up to Bailey Carmichael. You are the last one?
Hello, I'm Brandy Sheridan, and I live on Dorchester Village Road. I've listened tonight as my neighbors have pleaded with you to say no. There are three things that have become evident to me that I think we need to discuss. One is our future. What are we leaving for the students, the kids, the people who are coming up? Industry. This is what we are leaving them. We're not leaving them land. What happens to these buildings when these, this fails, their businesses don't do well, or this is not the area that is great for them five years down the road? What are we doing with all of those buildings then, and what are we leaving our future to deal with? That would be my first concern. Secondly, the infrastructure there. We don't have the EMS, we don't have the fire, we don't have the roads, we don't have any of those things. My father-in-law has called 911 from that area and has been told to meet the EMS people at the interstate. That's in our area, and that is some of the things that we are facing in that community, because we don't have the things that we need. Imagine a fire, I keep hearing that, because that was just recent in our area, but let's talk about injuries also in these industry, in this area and stuff. We don't have the emergency services even to deal with that. That is stuff that you, our tax-paying dollars, will be responsible for, and it's something that we're just not talking about, the money that we will need to put in to make these things successful. Parker's is going in right down the road, and it's gonna be a big truck stop. That is extra traffic that's not being also talked about tonight, on top of all of the industry, or all of the buildings that are being put in. So there are a lot of things that we're just not considering in the long-term things. There's a lot that we could do with this property to better our future, to teach our kids, to expand on. Right now, with an industry in that land right there, what we are telling our kids is, "Stay on your gaming system. Don't go outside, there's no park for you." Like, there is so much that we could do to better our kids and our future, and we're not doing that with all of this property that we have. And so we are growing, you approved one. I don't see why we're approving another one, one we could do so much more to improve Liberty County as a whole. Thank you.
And Ms. Mosher.
I just got a text from my son, can I just read the text?
Can't come back.
Now, you spoke for him earlier, Ms. Dax.
Well, that was speaking with my son, can I speak?
You spoke for him earlier.
Yeah, she can, Ms. Chairman, she can email it. It would be good to have it on record if she can email it.
Well, no, I wanna say, I wanna say in front of everybody. My son obviously must be watching on TV. He said, "The chairman on the, is on the Development Authority, he should have recused himself from voting."
And my county attorney will address that in a second.
I'm gonna dispense with the niceties and all that, we appreciate what you do, you have a hard job that you're doing that, at times, probably nobody stepped up to do when you did. So we appreciate that. Know that we're not against progress, we're not against not in my backyard, we're not those people. We are, we're just asking the commissioners to stop and take a breath, and we haven't done that. When I stood up here before you, it was said, in this very room, it's just an approval, it's just a rezoning, but now there's gonna be a Parker's truck stop in just that rezoning, okay? So, and it's gonna be like a cancer. BlueScope's gonna do this, and some other organization is gonna do that, but I wanna ask you really, purposefully, did you know that Tyler Perry waited 18 years to film The Jazz Man? And they filmed it primarily on Brigden Road and Dorchester Village Road because of the scenery? And it's come to my knowledge, I don't know how many Walking Dead fans and things we have, so, anyway, that they film in this area, they like what it looks like. So I stand before you today, as I have stood several times in these meetings, and I could rant about all the detrimental things that you haven't done, fire, safety, all of those things. But I come to you about this industrialization because you've heard these complaints 100 times over. In my opinion, you commissioners have yet to provide answers to any of the questions that we have asked, that the residents have asked, and there have been a great deal of speculation and what-ifs, but no real meat to cut our teeth on. The Liberty County Development Authority, the LC-whatever the verbiage is, is a Realtor for Liberty County, and they've done their job. They've sold Liberty County. Apparently, they're running out of room to do it. So, but my question also goes back to, if they've sold it, we have 12, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, there's seven that you can look at in Tradeport East, seven corporations. Why does Liberty County have a deficit? Why do our children not have the most technologically advanced things? Why are these corporations not pouring money into our county to make it the best it can be? Why do we need an S plus? That's not okay. And it does affect you, Mr. Walden, because what affects the county affects the city. We shop here, we work here, we do things, and it does affect you. And I'm sorry if you were offended because somebody thought you took money under the table, but we're approving this zoning, they already bought the property, the ink's already dried, the check's been cashed. So BlueScope, I have some property for sale, let's talk after dinner. Martha's got some more.
Come on now.
Anyway, okay.
Stay on track, stay on track.
Over the last few weeks, I have spent many nights at my computer, gleaning insights to municipal codes that I brought with me, reading ordinances, and digesting the rules and regulations set forth by the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. I did this so that I could help our neighbors understand what you guys work with every day. Development impact fee requirements, regionally important resources, minimum standards and procedures for local comprehensive planning, all of this information was to help me understand what you do, and the function that you, the commissioners, perform for we, the people, your voting constituents. I find the most disturbing thing that I have come across is the Georgia Ready for Accelerated Development Program. And for those of you that don't know what this program is, I will tell you, it's a certification that is offered to sites that want to industrialize. According to their website, these sites are ready for fast-track construction projects through advanced due diligence. Now, I'm not sure how long ago Liberty County Development Authority did their due diligence on these properties, but I don't think any of these people in the audience were aware of it. I don't think they had questions then. That's scary, that we advertise...
We've given you extra time already, so are you about there?
Okay, well, I represent other people on Dorchester Village that couldn't be here tonight. So it was stated in a previous meeting, it's just zoning. So it's like a cancer, it's gonna eat us up. Also stated during the meeting that they have property that's undevelopable. That's not okay. We're gonna put a man back on the moon, NASA has those problems, we can learn to develop what you have. It's not okay, and there's not the infrastructure for it. When Tradeport East went in, the commissioners then, the commissioners now, and a lot of you have been over here 20 years, I looked, that should have gone to the state and said, "We have this, this is what's gonna work? We need development, we need this to work for these people to be safe." We have to ask now, before problems occur. Commissioners, I also want you to, on your code of ordinances, the legalities that you abide by, I think you've forgotten what it says. It says, "Such regulations shall be made in accordance with the comprehensive plan for purposes." And it has verbiage like, "Securing our safety, conserving and developing natural resources. It's through your commandments and purposes for protecting our property. Please table this issue until more transparency and accountability is achieved, and you've answered the questions that we, the people, have. And the concerns, how are they gonna be developed? We have questions, there haven't been answers. Please table the issue." Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Come on, sir. The, are you gonna...
Well, as the applicant, we just wanted an opportunity to speak to a couple of points.
Actually, no, Ms. Chairman, actually, that should have been addressed in the lead-in, and would need to be addressed to the chairman, if you have any answers for the board members.
Not sure, I just wanted to address a couple of points, that's all.
Yeah, you would need to address those to the chairman, if he's supposed to entertain those.
May we address a couple of points that were brought up after we spoke?
You got three minutes worth, listen. So did, you gonna talk about, well, let me just see, I don't wanna mislead you.
Yeah, I'm Jason Chambliss, I'm with Thomas and Hutton, we're the civil engineers for BlueScope. The only thing I was gonna point out was related to the water and sewer infrastructure there, the property will be served by the Liberty County Development Authority Water and Sewer System. A water line is currently in Island's Highway, there's also a tank, a water tank that's been constructed nearby that would provide the fire protection. And just as a point of clarification, these warehouses are protected by what's called ESFR sprinkler system, which helps with fire protection, so that's a fairly common practice. But that's the only point that I had. If there are any other questions I can answer from a technical standpoint, I'd be happy to do it.
Y'all can talk after, 'cause we're not gonna do this back and two thing.
I do have one question for him.
Yes, sir.
You said, "Is there enough pressure to keep those sprinkler heads?"
Yes, well, what happens is, there's, each building has a fire pump within the building that pours water from the system. That's where the tank that was recently constructed is beneficial, because there provides supply of water for the fire pumps to get fed.
Where's the water from?
All right, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Mr. Rickerson, back to, oh, Kelly, address the, my voting.
Yes, sir, I guess...
Here with that.
Yes, sir. For the record, these are private developments, not projects of the Industrial Authority, but regardless, your service in the Development Authority doesn't present the sort of impermissible conflict that would require your recusal, so you're free to vote on the rezonings presented this evening.
Thank you, sir. With that said, and for the record...
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Rickerson.
Oh, back to the recommendation page.
Okay, sorry. Okay, and I want to point out that this is not from the planning commissioners, this is, these are, this is a special condition recommended by the planning staff.
Yeah, not the planning commission, the planning staff.
Ms. Chairman, the only thing to add there is that, should the board consider approval, I think we would ask that the same kind of stipulations that were put in those first ones be also incorporated, which would allow the board to acquire additional buffers or additional standards.
All right, Mr. Chair. Mr. Brown, I heard you said additional buffer, how can you put additional buffer when that building, that particular structure is right up on the highway?
Well, that, for instance, Ms. Stevens, it could, that recommendation would allow you to also require that building to be further set back, should you so desire. It would allow the board, through those agreements, to be able to require additional or different standards than what are proposed by the current developer.
Before or after the roadblock?
Ms. Chairman, I have a question for Mr. Rickerson. Jeff, could you go back to the, to the drawing of buildings? I think you said the planning commission, they were deadlocked 3-3, and south of that, the longest building, you said that that's, that's just all trees?
Yes, it's all wooded now.
And, but you said that if it was clear-cut, that the home zone, Dorchester Village Road, would be within sight of that building?
Within sight, it's about a quarter of a mile from Dorchester Village Road to the nearest building.
But if it was clear-cut, that they could see it?
It would be within sight.
You know, so...
Come on, Jeff, I mean, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah.
Let the commissioner ask the question, please.
So, could you require buffer, you know, that it don't cut everything, so that it'll always be a buffer behind there? I mean, because if the, if the sixth-member planning commission, was that, was that one of their concerns?
They were wrestling with that when they came to the 3-3.
So did they discuss maybe not clear-cutting it?
They did. Well, they didn't discuss putting a restriction on clear-cutting the whole property, but they did just try to discuss requiring some buffer, I think, I think they were talking about 100 feet of buffer along the back of these buildings here.
Which mean that if they did require that, then it wouldn't be clear-cut all the way to the side of the building?
It could be clear-cut down to here, but then there'd be a buffer along the first 100 feet.
Along the backside.
That's right.
Okay.
Jeff, on the particular acreage that's right there, it's all in full-grown pine trees now?
I believe it is.
So in this zone, agricultural?
It is, all this area, the remainder area here of this big parcel is all zone ag.
I'm disappointed in you.
And the owner, is the owner in here?
Mr. Davis is a representative for the owner, he is not here that I've seen.
Well, who is the owner?
CMJ Investments LLC.
That would be...
Alan Davis and Laura Jones.
So they're not, the owner's not here where we can ask these questions?
That's right.
In fact, the owner is probably deceased.
No, no.
No, he's not.
The original owner is deceased, that's right. His heirs own the property now.
Right.
Yeah.
They would cut that off.
I'll submit, if you had to clear the room, then we're gonna have you clear the room.
With all due respect, I don't even know where we at right now, in this process.
Commissioner Gilbert's asked some questions that he answered.
Right, I understand, it's just getting kind of not professional, and I just, I respect you all's time, I think we all just need to respect each other's time, on all sides. Even if we disagree, we need to understand how to do it professionally, that's all I ask.
Mr. Rickerson answered my question, Ms. Chairman.
He did?
I can answer mine too, thank you.
I'm sorry, I missed, I missed answering, I was distracted, I missed answering to you.
Well, I knew the property originally was part of Mr. Jones's, and I didn't know if Mr. Davis was the proper owner of it now, or who, so that was my only question, was he in the room? And obviously, he's not in the room. I mean, I know earlier we talked to the gentleman, and they own the piece, the old Royer farm, so I just wanted to let it be a little piece of the record that he was not here.
Okay. And, so Jeff, following Commissioner Gilbert's question, so additional condition could be...
100-foot buffer on the, on the southwest... A hundred-foot buffer on the, on the southwest side of the property.
Well, you know, because I, I think you said that that was part of the reason for the deadlock by the commission that they.
They couldn't decide on.
That was a concern.
That's right.
Okay.
And Commissioner Gillis brought up a good point there that, I mean, what you've got is trees from there all the way to the Dorchester Road, and eventually, I mean, you can see that there's probably potential, and we wouldn't really want anything to access on the Dorchester Road, even though it's going to be paved up to a point somewhere along in there. So, you know, you, they'd either have to go back out to the, you know, by Mr. Andy Crawford's old store down that way, so. But he's not here, and we can ask that question, too.
All right. All right, I think we have fully heard the presentation. We have a healthy discussion of all parties. So at this time, Commissioner Stevens, I'd like to call you, Gillis.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that this project be not approved based on infrastructure and it being placed, where the building is being placed right next up to the road and next to homeowners.
Is there a second?
Chairman.
All in favor, let me know, must your hands, please. All right, motion, please. Is there another motion on the floor?
Sure, I, I make my same motion that I, that I made earlier. I like to be fair, that we do table this until we can have further discussion with the developer. So we, and also, I, me personally, I want to see the agreement on the paper before we move forward.
I'll second that motion.
Motion in a second, that we table?
That we table it for, I guess, up to thirty days until we, we definitely have a agreement with, for the development agreement in place that we have discussed.
Will you clarify the development agreement?
Between the developers, am I correct? Isn't that the one that we've been talking about?
It would be, but it would also include something that the board has not looked at, and that was the agreed-upon developer shares for road impacts.
Absolutely.
That wouldn't be possible to get to you in thirty days along with the development agreement.
Okay.
Because you've got to take action, so.
Well, I, I take the thirty days out.
Simple.
There we go. So I table it until we, we have all of that in place.
You have a second on it?
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
But that leaves an open window.
Well, no, sir, it would just be tabled until such time as, as those are put in place. I think, I don't mean to speak to Commissioner Frazier, but that, that's what you're basically saying, is table, table until that, that those, those pieces are in place.
Right. Just, just one thing, Mr. Frazier, we are, we are tabling it contingent upon, on what, what was that now?
On all, all the agreements that, that we have discussed previously with the growth that we knew that was coming out, out in that area, with the impact with the agreement that we have.
Encroachment agreements, yes, sir.
Right, we, we, we've discussed that for a while.
Okay.
I mean, I know that the engineers may be here, but that's not the owner. And I, I want to make sure that we, we're talking to the owner, just like we did to the other one, Mr. Chairman. And I, he probably still lives in Liberty County, so he wouldn't take him on, so we could meet with him.
And it would go back before the, the planning commission?
No, sir, it would come back here.
It would come back here. It would come back here.
So, so we can, it would be, what's the word, relying upon how soon we're able to get
Correct.
Taken care of.
You're going to have, you're going to have a proposed fee schedule that'll come to you in January for your review.
I, I don't think too many people working for the rest of the year. We can wait.
So there's a motion that we table it until such time as, I don't, I won't say the agreements, that's not, that's too generic.
I would say tape, table, I recommend table the matter until the board has a chance to review the prospective arrangements for developer agreements.
That part.
All right.
Well, and also, Mr. Brown, the owner of the property has not had a chance to look at this either, has he?
To look at?
The fee schedule.
Oh, no, sir, no, sir.
Okay, then that's important that he understands that. I won't.
Unless his people can, can speak for him.
I don't, I don't think they can, Ms. Chairman, because that's something that the engineers are finalizing. We've been through a draft on. We have discussed, yes, sir, we've discussed with the developers that it's going to be in place, but also it'll include more than just a fee schedule for impacts, or not impacts, but for encroachments. It would also include any other stipulations in that agreement the board deems applicable, like setbacks or whatever, to the particular project.
And I believe these other developers were aware of those fees, but they're, I mean, as far as not knowing how much or whatever.
Correct. They do not either. That's correct.
And they were present tonight versus just, okay.
That's correct.
Well, I think this group was aware too, were they not?
They are.
Yeah, yeah.
They're aware of the.
Same level of awareness.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah. You just don't have the bottom line, but the same level of awareness.
I would think any, any other developer coming into the county should be made aware.
Yes, ma'am, y'all passed a resolution on that. I think Mr. Rickerson mentioned, y'all passed a resolution a couple of months ago authorizing those.
That's right.
Clear position. All in favor, let me show your hands, please.
That we table it?
Yeah, that we table it. All right. All right, sir.
Unanimous?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, Oscar, are you going to plan if this is approved? Is there another light down there since they're coming from?
That's a whole number of steps. Moving right along, Ms. Chairman.
Chair, ten motion to come out of, from here and back in the record.
Some move.
Second, all in favor, show your hands. Some announcements, Mr. Brown?
No, sir.
No, sir?
No, sir.
No, sir. All right, Chair, ten motion to adjourn.
Some move, Ms. Chairman. Thank you.